To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time last city clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilmember Jeans.
Here.
Councilmember Ross.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Here.
Councilmember Lasse.
Here.
Councilmember Sundwall.
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Here.
Mayor Larson.
I am here. So at this time to make sure that we're starting off legally, I asked the city clerk to administer the oath of office to councilmembers Jeans, Holloway, Lasse, Shepherd, and to myself, Mayor Larson. And for those that might question as to why a couple of members like Councilmember Sundwall and Ross, they were sworn in immediately after the election due to the fact that they were filling vacant seats that they were appointed to. So at this time if you could all please rise.
First of all, congratulations. Mayor, I'm going to do you separate. Thank you. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me, filling in the blanks. I.
Aye.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of City Council, position number.
The office of City Council, position number five.
For a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
The ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution.
And the laws and constitution.
Of the state of Washington.
State of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I do have certificates up here for each of you to sign. I can hand them out here for you. And then we'll have a photo opportunity as soon as I. You can keep the envelope that you've needed to these copies. Mayor Larson. Third time. Raise your right hand, which you've done. Aye.
Aye. Matt Larson.
Having been duly elected.
Having been duly elected.
To the office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
For a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
Commencing January 1st, 2018.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
And that I will support and maintain.
And that I will support and maintain.
The ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
The ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
The laws and constitution of the state of Washington.
Laws and constitution of the state of Washington.
And of the United States of America.
And of the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And I believe at this time we will have a photo opportunity with all of our council members and then with the families.
Okay. So you need two back.
Yeah. No, maybe she's got one. She gets one back.
So yeah, why don't all the councilors have just sworn in? If you could come around to the front and individually, if your family members are here, we'll just, Bob, we start with you because you know there's a, not recognizing a lot of the Jeans family here tonight. Just invite your family to come up and get some photographs.
I had yours to read off of. I had yours to read off. Thank you. Congratulations.
And if, uh. If folks can clear up the name of the Jeans family, please, so they get a clear shot with that. Oh, hang on. He was there. Chair.
Would you mind?
It's holding out.
Oh. Put it back in.
Oh, you did?
It is.
Thank you. So you're looking out for me.
Got to look out for number one.
There you go.
Yeah.
We had to do this tonight. I'm here solo. Want to get a picture with her? Miss gone. Wow, big family.
We're all here.
There's a family limit, that's too many people.
Get together.
Good. It's good.
And if I could ask for the full 2018 council, please join me up here for a photograph.
Can we move a little bit this way, just to get out of the public's way?
You want it so far this side?
Yeah, more, more this way.
It would shift over a little bit.
That should be good.
Sure.
Squeezing a little bit more, everybody together. And sideways.
Kind of lean into each other, but sort of handle each other.
One more time. Thank you.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meetings adjourned.
So I'd like to just briefly say that I'm just honored once again that the citizens have entrusted me with being the mayor of the city once again to continue leading the city and serving the citizens. And it's a great privilege for me to serve with all of you. I'm so grateful for all of you to step up to serve the public here and look forward to some good work ahead. So with that, if I could have a approval of the motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So move second.
I have motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion, council? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Congratulations, Councilmember Holloway, mayor pro tem.
With that, I'll turn it over to you to make the appointments. All right. I'd like to move into council committee and liaison appointments for 2018. Community development, Bob Jeans will be chair, Matt Lasse and Jim Mayhew will be members, and Peggy Shepherd as an alternate. Finance administration, Brian Holloway will be chair, Jim Mayhew and Catherine Ross will be members, Sean Sundwall will be alternate. Public works, Sean Sundwall, chair, Brian Holloway and Matt Lasse, members. Alternate will be Peggy Shepherd. Public safety, Catherine Ross, chair. Peggy Shepherd and Bob Jeans are members with Sean Sundwall as alternate. Do we want to do the liaisons at the same time?
Please, yes.
And I apologize for not getting these out in advance on the liaison positions. Liaison positions for 2018, arts commission, Peggy Shepherd. Economic development commission, Catherine Ross. Economic development commission of Seattle and King County, Jim Mayhew. Lodging tax advisory committee, Sean Sundwall. Meadowbrook Farm Preservation Association, Sean Sundwall. Northwest Railroad Museum, Jim Mayhew. Parks and events commission, Matt Lasse. Planning commission, Matt Lasse. Railroad days committee, Bob Jeans. Snoqualmie Valley Chamber of Commerce, Jim Mayhew. Sound Cities Association, Catherine Ross. Snoqualmie Valley School District, 410, Matt Lasse. Snoqualmie Valley Hospital District, number four, Jim Mayhew. Snoqualmie Watershed Forum, Peggy Shepherd. Brian Holloway as alternate. Snoqualmie Tribe, Bob Jeans. YMCA Board, Catherine Ross. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to make appointments and confirmations, council committees and liaisons as stated by Councilmember Holloway. Any discussion, council?
I didn't think I heard you say prima association, where I will continue as the.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Jeans, I didn't hear that.
There's another position that was left off the notes here is the prima association.
Right.
And Bob Jeans will be our representative. So I guess, can I make a motion to amend the main motion to include the prima association with Bob Jeans as our liaison?
So if there's no objection, so amended.
Okay. I understand, just as part of the discussion, Bob did an equitable cut here at trying to balance committee assignments. Unfortunately, four committees, seven council members, not all the math works out correctly. I did at least explore taking myself off Public Works, allowing room for somebody else, but both sitting members of, other sitting members of the board as suggested here rejected that proposal, if nothing else because I've been 12 years in Public Works. Okay, so with that, unless there are other motions to amend, I recommend we move forward with this. We will have a discussion later on this evening of potentially doing something else with committees. But that's a second, non-German secondary issue.
Okay. If there's no further discussion then, all those in favor?
I have something I want to say.
All right, if you could get my attention when it's there.
Okay.
Councilmember Shepherd.
So I'm concerned about the Public Works meeting, and Matt Lasse is assigned to go to Public Works as well as community development. And they're back-to-back, there's one hour allowed for him to attend the Public Works meeting. And I feel that it might not be convenient for him, and I'm only on one committee as a regular member. And I'd like to be on one other committee as well.
Okay, Councilmember Jeans.
Actually, sort of address it to Peggy. These microphones are not very good, and my hearing is not very good, so if you can, in the future, if you can just speak more into the mic, then I can hear what you're saying.
Sure.
Good, that's good.
Okay, so one of the things that's happened is that we're not allowed, as council members, I probably should tell this to the public because they're probably not aware, but they can only have three council members at a meeting. So if you're not one of the regular members, then you're excluded from being able to attend a meeting. And right now I've been assigned only as an alternate with the exception of one meeting. And I would like to attend another meeting as a regular member. And right now we have Matt Lasse, who is assigned to Public Works and to community development. And I know that last time we had a meeting, the first meeting that started at 5:00, did not complete before the next meeting started. And I would like to have that reassigned so that I can be a regular member on another meeting.
Yeah, Councilmember Shepherd, you want to state that in the form of a motion? To amend the, to amend the assignments, do you want to state it in some sort of a form of a motion?
I would like to amend it so that I can attend the either, and I don't have a strong preference, but I believe that Matt Lasse prefers community development, that I'd be assigned to the Public Works committee.
All right, thank you. Is there a second, council?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to amend per Councilmember Shepherd's request to assign herself to, or appoint her to another committee. Councilmember Lasse.
I don't see a conflict. I'm perfectly open to discussing. You know, we haven't set the, haven't completely set which days and which times the committees are going to meet. I'm not aware which yet, in terms of how that.
If members could please speak into the mic clearly.
Yeah, sorry. In terms of how that affects the liaison appointments as well. Currently, planning commission meets on the same Mondays as both Public Works and Parks, Public Works, Parks, and the community development, which makes it convenient because those run then concurrently. I don't, I don't see that being, being an issue. I'm sure there will be opportunities, as with all the committees, to have overlapping and alternates attending as well. You know, I'll leave it up to, to the group to discuss whether or not it remains as it I personally would prefer to stay on the two committees I've been appointed to.
I would just offer as a point of clarification, per the council rules and procedures, it is up to the chair, you have a new mayor pro tem, and now he's assigned chairs of the committees. It's up to the chairs of the various committees to set the schedule for this meeting. So until such time as those are set, there's no known conflict. Councilmember Mayhew.
So, sorry, Mayor, I'm just trying to get clarification so I understand the question. There are four committees. Each committee can have a maximum of three people. And there are, how many council members?
Seven.
Seven. So that means mathematically, one council, there's, if, if no, if every council member was on no more than two committees, then each council member mathematically would be on two committees, yet one, there would be the seventh, one of them would only be able to be on one committee. Isn't that mathematically correct?
Yes.
So what we're discussing here is which council member will only be on one committee? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jeans.
I would point out that the position of a liaison to any of the committees, you'll actually find yourself maybe more involved than you might otherwise be if you were assigned to two committees. Because the liaison, often there's conflicts, they call late for a meeting, or had to go out of town on business or vacation. So the liaison position.
Councilmember Jeans, as a point of clarification, I think you mean alternate?
Alternate.
What did I say?
You were saying liaison.
I'm sorry. I'm talking about the alternate. The alternate is actually a pretty active role. That's.
Councilmember Holloway.
Bob, with collaboration from me, put this together. A lot of the assignments were done by.
Councilmember Holloway, if you could please speak into the mic.
A lot of the assignments were done by seniority. I do hear the concern, the alternate position was kind of something started with Catherine and myself on FNA, and we've extended to all committees specifically to address that. We want to give opportunities that all members of the council get exposure across the board. But the math kind of forces unclean answers.
Councilmember Lasse.
I'm not sure if this is, if this is what was read, was what was distributed as a draft previously, but I can, I believe Sean Sundwall, Commissioner's, sorry, council member, Sean Sundwall, I'll get used to that, is only on one committee also, and is alternate on two others.
No. Sean is chair of Public Works, and he is also on the, oh, wait a minute. Sean, where are you? No, I stand corrected, you're right.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend?
Just a point of clarification, when you have four committees and no more than three councilmembers for each, that'd be 12 positions, and you have seven councilmembers, so there's going to be two councilmembers that are going to be, only have one committee, not just, just one. It'll be 14 total.
Again, council, is any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, all in favor?
So what's the amendment?
As a point of order, can you clarify what the amendment is?
Oh, thank you, I should restate the motion. The motion is to.
Amendment.
The amendment, the amendment was to appoint Councilmember Shepherd to either the Public Works or, or one other committee.
Right.
For, for a minimum of two, two committees, that she wanted to serve.
No, it has to be the one of them. One of them. Yeah. She said Parks, Public Works. She did.
Yeah, Parks and Public Works Committee.
Well, okay, to make this clean then, because there's only three councilmembers per committee. Does a complete motion need to say this person added, this person taken out?
Yes. It should be appointed.
Yeah, that's a good point. The motion should be complete as to show exactly how all the chairs are moving around. Who's, who's, who's moving out as well as moving in?
Or who's becoming alternate.
Okay. Do you want to add that to a motion or clarify the motion? Who are you proposing be moved out to an alternate? Councilmember Lasse. Okay. Okay, so the motion was that she asked, Councilmember Shepherd asked that she be appointed to the Parks and Public Works Committee as well with Councilmember Lasse being moved to alternate in Parks and Public Works Committee.
Okay, that's complete motion.
And assuming there's no other discussion on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Vote is six, six opposed, one affirmative. So the most, the amendment fails. So back to the original motion with the appointments as stated by Councilmember Holloway. Any further discussion on the main motion, council? Councilmember Ross?
I do have a question. On the lodging tax, where Sean is chair, is, I thought the CDC chair was also part of the lodging tax committee, is that correct?
There is not necessarily a nexus between the two.
There wasn't, okay. Then fine.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, motion is carried with six ayes and one nay. All right, with that, my laptop's gone dormant through that, so let me get it back up. All right, I should, I failed to note at the beginning of the meeting, folks, and for anybody watching the meeting, we have, two of the members joining us tonight have, this is their first time on the city council, so they're brand-new, and there's at least three of the members that have been here six months or less, so it's a relatively new council. And, and even for those of us who have been more experienced, have been for a while, it's a good refresh to visit parliamentary procedures, so if we seem a little stilted tonight, it's because we're trying to, trying to get up to speed and clean up our process here. To my left is Ann McFarland, she's a professional parliamentarian, and we actually had a course for about an hour and a half prior to tonight's meeting, and so we're trying to remind ourselves about running more efficient and fair meetings in the future here, so if we seem a little bumping around, or if you wonder why someone's poking on me or whispering in my ear occasionally, it's because she's trying to keep me on track and make sure we clean things up a bit. So with that, we'll move on to citizens' comments, and at this time invite anyone from the public that would like to comment on anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Due to the length of the agenda this evening, the comments will be limited to two minutes. In order to keep the meeting orderly, I'll remind folks that citizens have the right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city in an efficient and orderly manner. And so please don't be insulted if we're kind of limiting your comments, because we need to get on and get the citizens' business done. Wait, wait to be recognized, and I'll call you forward to the podium, and at that time state your name and address for the record, deliver comments in an efficient and courteous manner, and avoid comments that are duly repetitious or not relevant to city business. Please address the council, the questions directly to me and not the council as a whole. Avoid, address the, yeah, do not single out individuals, and the council will only listen to your comments at this time. It's not a give-and-take debate, where it's not that the council's being disrespectful at this time, just to listen to your comments, and we can certainly direct you to staff or the resources to answer your questions if you have some. So with that, are there any citizens that would like to comment at this time? Ms. Setello.
Anna Setello, 7713 Center Boulevard Southeast. So just tonight, as I was driving down, I was noticing with Christmas down and the city's taken down now their lights, but the lights that are still on merchants, I remember reading an email regarding when they were given permission in order to have the lights there. And it was really clear that everything was going to be the same clear light, so it's kind of straggly. Some merchants have them up, some don't. There's, some are colored, there's really no consistency, and I'm really not sure if there's a design standard for the downtown as well. I know in the Ridge that it's done through the ROA, and we leave ours up until most of the winter, so I don't know if there's differences, but I would like to see it just cleaner and neater, and that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Setello. Shirley.
Shirley Lewalski, 8818 Norman Avenue Southeast. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for all of you running to represent us, and I'm sure you're going to be, do a great job.
Yeah, Shirley, if you could please speak.
Sorry. I'm sure you're going to do a great job. I know that sometimes it's a thankless job, and I have learned myself by coming to the meetings how many hours that you do put in, and I appreciate that, more than I can say. Though one thing I do want to say is that there has been a lot of controversy in the city, as we all know with the last election, and I kind of sat back in going to the meetings for as long as I have. And this is just an opinion, it's not to criticize or condemn or anything. The only thing that I would say would be what I have noticed sometimes, and I believe that Councilmember Lasse brought this up at a planning commission meeting one time, when there is a new development, the developer goes in front of the planning commission first, gets the approval, and then it gets to the city council, and then they get the approval. And from what I've seen, especially with the last development, which is what still Lasse brought up one time at a planning commission meeting, was I don't think that we hold our developers to what they, as to what they propose that they're going to do and how it comes out. One of the.
Shirley Lewalski, 8818 Norman Avenue Southeast.
First of all, I want to say thank you very much for all of you running to represent us, and I'm sure you're going to be, do a great job.
Yeah, Shirley, if you could please speak.
Sorry. I'm sure you're going to do a great job. I know that sometimes it's a thankless job, and I have learned myself by coming to the meetings how many hours that you do put in, and I appreciate that, more than I can say. Though, one thing I do want to say is that there has been a lot of controversy in the city, as we all know with the last election, and I kind of sat back in going to the meetings for as long as I have, and this is just an opinion, it's not to criticize or condemn or anything. The only thing that I would say would be what I have noticed sometimes, and I believe that Councilmember Lasse brought this up at a planning commission meeting one time, when there is a new development, the developer goes in front of the planning commission first, gets the approval, and then it gets to the city council, and then they get the approval. And from what I've seen, especially with the last development, which is what still Lasse brought up one time at a planning commission meeting, was I don't think that we hold our developers to what they, as to what they propose that they're going to do and how it comes out. One of the examples is the new, and this is no condemnation of it, because I thoroughly enjoy the Safeway, and I thoroughly enjoy Bartles, but the developer there, when the plan was presented, there was not, that was not the Bartles. It was supposed to be small retail, you know, he was going to have different restaurants, and what we now have is five pizza places in the city, it's in Okwame, and three Starbucks, and it's run out, the Snow Valley Coffee. So my only thing...
Shirley, if you could please conclude quickly, conclude your comment.
My only thing would be to say, if they, if we could just hold them to, to, to do what they say, and then say what they, say what they do, and then do what they say. And I think too, as citizens, that we have to realize that the city is a business, and even though we pay the taxes...
Shirley, I'm sorry, quickly.
Okay.
You can certainly submit...
Yeah, I'm sorry, that we have to understand that you guys make the decisions, and that you have more information than we do.
All right, thank you, Shirley.
So, thank you.
Ms. Lowey.
Monica Lowey, PO Box 493. Congratulations to the new council members. I'm very excited for the new coming year, and I basically wanted to touch on a few things. Mayor Larson, you promised we'd have a clock for citizens, so we would know how much time we had. I'm not seeing that tonight, I was hoping to see that. I'm hoping that you'll continue with that commitment and order a clock, so we know if we have two minutes, three minutes, and when to wrap it up. Also, I want to let you all know that I'll be providing a six-page letter to the council and city staff tomorrow regarding the hawk traffic signal proposed for the Fisher Avenue intersection. I've put a lot of hours into doing a lot of hard work with certified engineers, traffic experts, DOT, et cetera, and this hot crosswalk is going to be very dangerous in professionals' opinions. It does not meet the Washington State DOT M U T C guidelines, it'd be in 100 feet from the corner of the intersection. The city's planning to put it right on the corner, and it's crossing six lanes. It's also going to be put in a location where there's not currently a crosswalk, therefore drivers are not used to stopping, and people travel 50-plus miles an hour down a very steep grade, which also does not meet the slope requirements, as mentioned in Partite's redraft of the plans from a traffic signal, which is what it should be, and I still believe should be a four-way traffic signal with four crosswalks, like every other intersection. And the city did accept about $205,000 to do exactly that 10 years ago, and citizens are not going to give up on that. So we're hoping the city will do the right thing. We're hoping they will not put citizens in harm's way. And lastly, I'm hoping that the other 218 citizens that were on the PSRC grant application in a, basically the documentation that they presented to the city, asking for the city to put in a crosswalk, and the city misrepresented 219 citizens minus Donna Johnson, that's 218 citizens. Her email has nothing to do with what the other citizens wanted, which was clearly asking for a traffic signal. So I hope you'll do the right thing.
Thank you, Ms. Lowey. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? All right, see no one else move forward, we'll move on to the consent agenda, action items. All items listed below will be acted by one motion. Action items include minutes
I'd originally agreed to, but I don't understand.
Todd or Dan, I'm looking to one of you to...
Do not believe that this amendment reduced the scope.
What was the question?
Did the scope of the work change?
No. No, the scope hasn't changed. It's just that they got late with, there was a de-watering report from a subconsultant that was late in arrival, and I don't know why the date was at the end of the year as being a contract term, but they exceeded that.
So we don't get into a long discussion between the two. Councilmember Shepherd, if you could just state all of your questions and concerns, and then let the staff address those, that would be...
Okay, so in one of their documents, they talk about they've reduced the scope, so I don't understand what that, what they're referring to.
Now, was it the direction of the city? That was, again, so I come into this project late, so I don't know the full background, but it used to be about twice the size. For some reason, they decided to split the project up. I think there was some concerns with the other portion of it. They reduced the scope to, you know, just the Greek streets, as we call it, and, and they carried on with the project.
But...
Councilmember Holloway.
Point of clarification, this amendment did not change the scope?
No, no.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Okay, so as far as the original cost that you negotiated, was it for a larger scope, and now we're down to a smaller scope?
Point of order. I believe, yeah. I believe that's outside the amendment being discussed today. I believe that's talking about the larger contract and not this amendment, is that correct?
Well, there's no, there's no amended motion that we're discussing.
We're talking about this amendment right here, and I believe the question is outside the scope of this amendment. I believe the question is referring to the larger contract.
I'm not, Councilmember Sunwalk, I'm not sure if I'm following, I mean, we're, we're just, oh, contract amendment. So what was the question, or point of order?
It wasn't my question.
Or you were doing a point of order, what did you say?
Maybe Peggy could repeat the question.
Well, actually, I think the reason that I think is germane is because they say that there's no additional cost, but if you reduce the scope of something, then you're getting less for the same amount of money that you're spending, if that's what's going on. That's what I'm trying to understand.
So I guess to roll on the point of order, I don't sustain it, I mean, I think the questions are relevant to the...
But we just discussed that this amendment is, this amendment does not constrict the contract.
The amendment only extends...
I'm going to invite Ann away, and she's going to maybe be helpful.
So if I may, once a point of order has been made by the chair, it may not be discussed. The only possible response is to appeal it.
Okay.
In the parliamentarian's view, the ruling by the chair was correct.
Carry on.
I lost track of what the ruling was.
All right. And Councilmember Shepherd, what I was trying to impress earlier, so it's not you asking a question and staff responding, you asking a question, staff responding, it goes on for five minutes. If you could simply list, I don't care if it's five or 10, just list all of your questions and concerns, and then we'll have the appropriate staff and folks come up and respond to that, if we could.
So what I'm trying to understand is, is if the change in scope has been reduced, if you keep the price the same, but you're doing less work, in effect, you're increasing the cost.
Okay. Did you have any other questions or concerns?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holloway.
I guess, point of clarification, Peggy, poor wording. In part, the change in scope happened prior to this amendment, but they titled, they titled the whole thing as reduced scope. So that title's carrying forward from a prior action. This amendment doesn't change the scope, it merely extends the time. It, I agree that it, the title is now reduced scope, whatever, but that was done in a prior action.
So in other words, contract amendment number two is strictly to extend the contract completion date, nothing to do with any of the...
Not to do with any of the scope. We actually reduced the scope in a prior action. From there on, the project has been called, this project reduced scope. So it's carrying, again, carrying forward from prior action. Poor choice of...
So the amendment is strictly to do with changing the completion date, correct?
It only changes completion date.
That's correct, yes.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Any other questions or discussion, council, on this item? All right, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to action? Anna?
I'll answer my Partite now, because mine is just kind of a complaint. For me, it's insult to injury to keep using a vendor that, I'm going to use the word frauded us, and really, not the city. I'm going to say fraud, Jim, because here's the deal. The state auditor came back and said, Partite overcharged on these charges, these to and from charges. If I get overcharged for something from a vendor, I'm never using that vendor again. Carpet cleaner overcharging me for two jobs, I'm never using him again. So it's insulting, because these fees, the city didn't pay, so the city really wasn't interested in them. The developer, the developer didn't pay them, he passed them on to me in my build-out. Not me, but everyone. He passed them on to Quadrant and their houses, so really, anyone who owns, those, we were the ones that paid those. So it's very insulting to me, and I know we hired a city planner who no, or not, excuse me, a engineer, a city engineer, as the state auditor requested, and now we're back to using Partite again, 10 years later. It makes no sense to me, and it makes me angry.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trump.
Rents are high for a reason, because we had to pay for those things.
Is there any other member of the public would like to comment on this item prior to action? All right, council, back to you then, for any further discussion. Councilmember Mayhew?
If I could just get some clarification, maybe from the chairman or staff, but for this item that we're considering, it's a contract that's already been in place, the contract's already been signed, the vendor's been chosen, the funds committed. This, we don't have a opportu, we're not looking at choosing a vendor right now, we're merely allowing additional time for the project to complete, and as I understand it, the additional time is required because of some action or inaction by the city, which is causing the contract to need a little more time to complete. Is that correct?
Yeah. Dan, some of the, or Bob Surbank, if you'd like to respond?
Well, sure, just, just from the staff report and looking at the contract documents, so this contract was for design services. So Partite, as engineers, was designing a project. That project, the city directed a reduction in the scope of the project to be built. That required Partite to then change the design documents to reflect the change in scope. That's what it says in the staff report. As such, they needed additional time to complete their design changes. The amendment that's in front of the council, only as it's been pointed out, extends the time for completion of the design work. But I don't see anything here that reflects a reduction in Partite's scope.
As I understand, amendment one had to do with the redefinition of the scope. Would that be accurate?
I don't know, I don't know what amendment was, and maybe Jeff can speak to that.
Well, as I recall, and again, I wasn't involved with this during the development, but I think that the reduction of the scope was due to the cost, so that we had to reduce the, the scope of the project, so it would fit the budget.
That's not...
That's not what we're doing.
That's not the question, that's not relevant to this issue, just clarifying that the scope was done under a different amendment or a different change or council action.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
That's all I'm trying to say is, that was a different council action that was preceded this. This is strictly to change the timeframe.
Okay.
Councilmember May, or Councilmember Holloway, I'm sorry.
Who has the responsibility of providing the de-watering report?
Terra, I think it was, I can't, TerraCon, maybe? I can't remember the name of the firm.
So to answer your question, it wasn't a city report, it was a third party to the city, TerraCon.
Councilmember Holloway, if you could direct your comments to the chair, please.
Okay. To answer my question, the delay or extension is due to the delay in receiving of the de-watering report from a third party, primarily another contractor to the city, who had the responsibility to provide that.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't ask my question. My question is, is the action we're taking today involve choosing a vendor or committing new funds to that vendor, or is it solely taking an existing contract with an already chosen vendor and merely providing extra time for completion of that contract?
Jeff?
All right.
Jeff, if you could say that.
Is that for me? Okay, yes.
Audio can't capture a head nod, so...
The second part of that is correct. We are just extending the, the time duration of the contract to allow them an extra three months to complete the design.
And, and that, just following, to be clear, that was caused by a report from a third party that was late in arriving, so this is not an extension that is due to some action or inaction, or inaction of the contractor here, Partite. It is due to something that, under the control of the city, and that's why we're granting the additional time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, council? All right, is there any member of the, we already did that, I'm sorry, so all those, if everybody understands, the motion at hand is Agenda Bill 002, stated by Councilmember Holloway, Contract Amendment Number Two with Partite Incorporated to Extend Contract Completion Date for Engineering Services Associated with Utilities Infrastructure Improvement Project. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Are there... Are there any other, the motion was approved six to one. Any other comments for, or any other report for Parks and Public Works Committee?
No report.
Community Development Committee report. Thank you, Jeff. Community Development Committee? Who's got Community Development?
We don't have anything.
Okay. Finance Administration Committee, Agenda Bill 18008, operational consulting advisory services and accounting reporting services.
The City of Snoqualmie seeks an independent, objective examination and consulting activities designed to add value and improve the City Snoqualmie Financial and Contract Administration operations. Clark Huber has been submitted a proposal to accomplish this objective. Moved to approve the use of Clark Huber services as described in their proposal to provide professional services to the City of Snoqualmie and authorize the mayor to sign the consultant services agreement.
Need a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, approved, Agenda Bill 18008, stated by Councilmember Jeans. Is there any discussion or questions, council? Councilmember Jeans, did you have anything to kick off right on this since you made the motion?
Actually, I think Councilmember Mayhew has a point to make about this.
Councilmember Mayhew.
Thank you. I, I think this is a very good proposal and hits the things that we're, that we're interested in. I, I, my assessment is that it addresses more than just those items that were of immediate interest to us. Some of them, I think, may be of interest to us in the not-too-distant future. But my thought is that we should restrict the initial tasking under this arrangement to a subset of the things that they've proposed. And the specific things, I think, should be those that arose out of concerns related to the consulting contract for, I guess what's referred to as the Billington contract. And specifically, that's in the area of contract administration and compliance, accounts payable and disbursements, and perhaps, since it came up during that, also payroll matters. But anything outside of those three areas, and in particular, that we restrict the initial project to just those things having to do with control activities, item number 12 under the COSO framework, and other items only as necessary to complete that particular more narrowly focused project. And that we then consider any of the other services, which we may also consider some of the services later in their proposal. They suggested some things we might look at in the future that were not in what we asked for. And some of those, in fact, we may choose to do. But I would suggest that all items, other than what I just specified, not be in the initial tasking, which will serve two purposes. One is keep them focused, probably keep the initial cost a little bit lower. But let us get to answers on those specific things coming out of that contract more quickly.
Well, Councilmember Mayhew, I think what I'm gonna ask of you is to, I know you discussed this briefly with the city administrator, Bob Larson, earlier. And we have a representative of the consultant here tonight, too. And so maybe ask to hear a little bit from both of them responding to some of your concerns. And while they're doing that, if you could formulate, perhaps put that in the form of an amendment or a motion in terms of how to get, if you're gonna do action tonight to keep this moving along?
Right, so let me be clear. With respect to the motion that's on the table, I am in favor of it. I think it would approve a scope of work. And my request would be that perhaps the council give its sense towards the administration that we'd like to have a direction towards a lesser initial scope. We approve the whole thing, but ask administration to initially scope less than that in the initial tasking.
So you're suggesting kind of do it in two phases? An initial phase would be more highly focused and then broaden it in a second.
That's right. And administration would conduct it in that manner, but we would approve the whole project as, as the motion proposes.
Okay, so it's, the details don't really change, it's more maybe the timing of which piece is first.
That's right.
But again, if you want to put an amendment on the table, I would welcome that. If you want to bring specificity to what it is you're asking for. So with that, I'll turn it to the city administrator and ask for any response or comments on that. And with the Clark Newber representative as well.
We have the proposal. I want to make sure we're clear that I would prefer or ask or recommend that the council not make it a specific motion. But rather than to, I understand what's necessary here. I certainly appreciate the comments of Councilmember Mayhew. I believe that would be the best tactic to take. You may recall in previous discussions on this, on this particular request for proposal that we put out, that there was, I was suggesting two parts. One, to immediately address the contract administration compliance and accounts payable and disbursements, and potentially the payroll issues. That were part of that, I'll call the events and cultural activities, or the Billington contract has been referred to. The second part was that, as you all are well aware, we are in the process of recruiting for a new finance director. And that second part, it was more pertaining to trying to have a little bit deeper analysis of some of the processes of the finance department and how those folks interact and their processes and their programs interact with all the departments. Able, in order for us to be able to hand the new finance director kind of a game plan of what we've observed, rather than requiring that person to come in and spend the first several months trying to find it out for themselves. We believe Clark Newber is well qualified, along with our interim finance director, Rob Wharton, to help with that process and make, make a much smoother transition.
Councilmember Sumal.
So I'm probably the least qualified on this council to talk anything financial matters. But when you, the way you stated that, I was drawing upon some sports analogies. It sounds to me like you are, it seems to me that we would want to have the new, for lack of a better term, CFO dictate some of that, rather than be handed, here's the playbook. This is what you're gonna abide by. I would, it would seem like someone at that senior level would want to have some sort of say in how his department or her department would run. Whereas, my understanding is you're proposing having an outside firm develop that game plan, and then we almost hire to that game plan versus allowing that CFO to have his or her say. Did I hear that wrong?
Actually, yes. The clarity would be that we would be making a report available to that finance, the new finance director, with the intention that they would have those observations. It wouldn't be, you have to use these. It's gonna be done in concert with the fact, we may get the report well in advance of hiring the new finance director. And I would expect our interim finance director to take that and use it to help us as we start the process. For instance, having the 19, excuse me, 2019, 2020 biannual budget started that process. Also getting some other details worked out internally that we know we have some process issues with right now. Some of it has to do with electronic processes, wanting to work with the purchase order system or contract procurement, contract administration, purchase orders, payroll issues. Rob can probably fill in the blanks on the other ones, I failed to remember at this time. But that wouldn't require a new finance director to come up with those ideas. I think the person would actually appreciate having that information in front of them.
If I could add something, and to use your sports analogy, it'd be more like giving them a good scouting report on where your strengths and weaknesses are and recommendations for filling some of the gaps and problems that you currently have.
I guess to continue that, I guess to continue that analogy, I would expect the general manager to hire the scouts. So that's.
Councilmember Mayhew.
So, a question for staff, or mayor, maybe staff could answer, is, as I look down the specific list of items on pages six and seven, I see a whole number of items which I don't think we should do right now. So I am, there are sort of two ways in my mind that I see right now that I could try to have this addressed. One is, as these are all items that we might like to do over the next year, I could be in favor of approving this contract with an understanding that we will not do some of these items. For example, there's an item on here to look at our federal grants and grant reporting. Well, that's an area that we get a specific audit report on from the state auditor. It's not an area that has a question coming up for it. I don't know why we would look at that right now. So I think some of these items that are on here, and I could give you some other items, that there are a number of items on here that don't seem like current issues. But I take Administrator Larson's point that we might want to look at those. So one option is that I propose that we don't accept this. And then we have to go through a process of getting a revised proposal that's more narrowly focused. What I'd rather see us do is accept this, but have the administration not spend the full amount and exclude some of these items for a second phase. So go ahead and accept this contract is my inclination, if we have an understanding that we're not gonna do some of these things that are not currently priorities, at least not in the first phase.
Councilmember Mayhew, is your concern primarily cost or just the time? You want this to get done quickly and efficiently, and the more items that are put in there slows it down or also inflates the cost of the consulting services? What is the primary concern then?
Yes.
Yes, on both.
Those are the concerns.
All right. But again, then I would, I appreciate that you're trying to, one, support, but then also focus to achieve those goals of reducing cost and speeding up the process. But I guess we would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to maybe step in on this one, Anna. Because when it comes to sort of truncating a motion, it seems almost like you're fundamentally alternate, but almost have to be readacted and brought forward. But, or the amendment could be just, it's gotta be specific in saying, here's five things I don't think the staff should focus on.
Well, from the parliamentarian's perspective, the comments that the council members have made are fully consonant with the plan that the administrator has outlined. So she does not see any, and need to get more specific on this. There are times where a general guidance is acceptable.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I guess if you're approving it in current form with the direction of kind of do a first-phase focus, I don't see how the costs change, per se, or the, well, the speeds could certainly change, but the cost for the consulting contract would remain largely the same, since we're still committing to the, to all the services, whether they're done in three weeks to three months, with some of the focused ones that you're discussing. Because I know what the other councilmembers might not know is I know Bob and I have invited you, Jim, given your background, to be part of the initial meeting with the consultant to help clarify some of these issues, so. And maybe that's all that needs to be said now.
Too little.
Is that you would provide that specificity in that conversation we sit down with the consultant to focus.
Right, this is, this is a time phase, so it talks about January, February, March activities that would happen, so. I'm sorry.
Good timing.
I don't know how to drink water, evidently. So I'm just, I'm just looking for some idea that if we approve this as is, that in fact, it will not be conducted exactly as it's laid out here. But in fact, in a different manner where we trim some of these from this initial time phase to moving them to a later time phase. If that's sort of acceptable, then I'm in favor. If that, if the feeling is, no, it's kind of, this is the plan, then I have a greater concern than.
Okay. No, and I appreciate, because I think what you're trying to respect, too, is the difference between meddling in the details of the executive branches of governments, this is our purview to execute how it's done versus. But, but I know that, I think both Bob and I are comfortable that that's, you're coming to simply offer some, you know, expertise and advice to focus that, and we're comfortable with that. So if the council understands that. Councilmember Holloway, did you wanna, I want to kick it to the consultant to be able to offer some, any other comments? Did you have any other, are you just waiting for more questions?
By the way, this is Mitch Hansen. He's gonna be the lead consultant on the project.
Certainly, if the council wanted, there could be a motion to amend the main motion to make the scope a two-phase, you know, to take things out.
Yeah, well, that's what I was kind of looking for. It didn't, it didn't seem that either Anna or I or Bob were too concerned that that needs to be nailed down. I guess I, Jim, I think what you're trying to be sensitive to is you don't want to be that specific, because you want to leave some latitude in that discussion to take place for, to really put it in place with the consultant's input and Bob's input and so forth.
Well, that's right. I mean, you'd need to find out, once you remove certain items from this timing, you're gonna need to talk to the contract, find out, okay, what does that do to the pricing? Do they have some advice, for some reason, that might modify how you? It seems like there's a sort of back and forth that will happen, and so I don't necessarily want to meddle in that. But I do want to try and give some guidance that there are only certain items, and I can tell you what specifically they should be, that should only be in the first phase, and that all the remaining items should be pushed to a later phase. Even if that phase is three months from now, I think we should get through the first phase, focus solely on contract administration, compliance matters, accounts payable and disbursements, and payroll. So out of this list, those items should be extracted. And I don't think we need testing of 25 items, we just need sufficient items selected so that the contractor feels like they have an understanding of what they're looking at and what different transactions entail. So if we can restrict the initial to just those, should that be a motion that I then?
Yeah, yeah, Anna was saying, Anna, just wait, don't, don't.
That sounds like an amendment. That sounds like a specific amendment, which I heard.
That's what I was kind of looking for, if you could maybe state.
Right, so I'm happy to do that. I just, I'm aware that that would require then administration to come back for further approval from council to do any of the items beyond that list.
Not necessarily, no. If you do an amendment to it and then it's embedded in this approval, it can be approved tonight with, with that specificity. That's what I was trying to get at, so that we don't have to come back again, and you're satisfied with the focus.
Wonderful, that's what I want to.
And so before you make that amendment, I know that Councilmember Holloway and Shepherd have been patiently waiting.
I was trying to help on the amendment, I think he's got it.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Shepherd, we'll kick it to you before I kick it back to Councilmember Mayhew for an amendment.
Well, I think the significant difference here in, I like what Sean had said about letting the new person that's coming on board drive this. I think that it would be really helpful to have that expertise coming, to really have another set of eyes on how to approach the process. And I think we'll still have Bob here, and he can work with him. So it's not, you know, we'll still have, you know, the history and, you know, the background and everything. But I think it would be prudent to wait until we hire the, the new CFO or whatever we want to call that title.
Councilmember Sumal.
So let me just clarify my conflict here. I think there, what Councilmember Mayhew said about the three things or so that we need to, that are, I guess, for lack of a better term, tied to the Billington issues, I think those need to happen right away. And I'm absolutely 100% prepared to vote for those happening right away. Higher-level strategic things, which is the phase, a lot of phase two and phase three, to me, need to be, we need to wait for our financial leader, whoever he or she is, to come in. Unless we're planning to hire a mid-level person who we just want to follow a playbook, rather than create a playbook. So that's why I believe an amendment needs to be made to carve out the three things that Councilmember Mayhew has assigned, approve those tonight, and then revisit when, when we're prepared for a, actually, I wouldn't even need to revisit. I would, I would fully trust whatever CFO we hired to help carry out and execute phase two and three.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jeans, and then Holloway.
I like what I've heard, and I'm ready to be receptive to Councilmember Mayhew's amendment. But I'd first like to hear from the Clark Huber matter as to whether these kinds of things that we're talking about make sense and is workable.
Definitely. We're, we're happy to split this out and adjust the timing to whatever meets your needs. I think the, the only item that you didn't include on your list that I think you might want to consider is the federal compliance piece, because there was a major overhaul of the federal grant administrative requirements a year or so ago. And you need, my understanding is you haven't had someone come in to look to see, are you jumping through the right hoops for your federal compliance? And that could come, that could result in a finding from the state auditor when they come in to do your compliance auditing, if you don't have all your ducks in a row for federal compliance.
Councilmember Lussey.
I'll just echo.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I?
Yeah, you skipped.
Councilmember Holloway.
Come back, go ahead.
You're so kind.
I'll just echo the same thought. I'm very appreciative that an amendment is being looked at to accelerate some of the issues that we know are pressing, and having the consultant willing to participate in that. And the same thing, I don't think it's an issue of cost or, or necessarily the overall time. It's more about getting to the issues at hand that were discussed previously and why this consultant's been hired to, to look into the issues and addressing those as quickly as possible. At the same time, the chief financial officer position then hopefully will be able to follow through on the remaining items and create that playbook as we've discussed. So I support hearing an amendment.
Councilmember Holloway, thank you for your patience.
So I support the amendment. I am concerned of tying the rest of it to a new CFO. I don't, basically, we get a report that the business processes have these strengths, these weaknesses, and these deficiencies. That doesn't change based on the CFO in place. And I think any CFO coming in board would appreciate that going in. So I don't think we should tie those two things together as far as timing. If anything, I'd like it done before the new CFO. But I. But, I don't, I, I would not support de-scoping those items waiting for the CFO. I have no problem prioritizing per the amendment, I just would not support de-scoping.
If there's no objections, I'll offer Councilmember Ross, the only one that hasn't spoken to this item, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I agree with the different statements, that we need to look at compliance right now, and then strategic issues down the road.
Councilmember Mayhew, are you ready?
I think I am.
Trying to buy you some time here, you know.
I can, I have a fair number of words. I can provide these words to the clerk, they're written in a moment, so you don't have to try and keep up with me. So, I have a motion that we amend the motion to require the contract be conducted in at least two phases, with the initial phase consisting only of consulting work related to control activities in Principal 12 of the COSO framework and such additional areas as needed to perform this, focused on the specific areas of payables and dispersments, contract administration and contractor adherence to requirements, and payroll. Specific concerns being under contract administration compliance, potentially contractual terms waived or not included that should be included or not waived, for example, insurance, potentially inappropriate performance requirements included in a contract, potential failure to ensure invoice compliance with contract, with city or contract requirements, for example, city licensing, state licensing, and the area of accounts payable and dispersments, potential failures, failure to ensure invoice compliance with contract, rates, payments of city BNO taxes, et cetera, potentially payments for work before services are rendered or work not rendered, adequacy of documentation of work performed, and potentially invoices not properly approved due to approver conflict of interest.
Second.
And a motion, a second, as stated by Councilmember Mayhew, I'm not going to restate that. This is a compliment, but I think that's officially the longest amendment ever made by a council.
It was a lot shorter, but anyway.
Any discussion on the amendment, council? Councilmember Summow.
I didn't hear what the second phase would do. I believe everything you had talked about upfront, you talked about breaking it into phases, but you only talked about Phase One. Is that to suggest that this, this thing that we will now vote on will only be Phase One, and Phase Two will come back to?
Everything not mentioned will be in Phase Two.
Yeah, I said, I require the contract be conducted in at least two phases with the initial phase consisting of those things that I had done read.
Yeah, so anything that wasn't read would be in Phase Two.
Okay, and do those need to come?
Listed by omission.
Do those come back to us to revisit at some later date, or is that just, no?
No, no, you're basically approving it in its entirety, and then it's up to the administration to then execute that in the appropriate fashion, meaning that we understand that the focus is on those items just listed in the amendment. Holloway, oh, okay.
Every time Matt wants to speak, I'll just let him go.
I'm sorry, hang on. Okay, you didn't list the federal, but I'm assuming.
That would move it to Phase Two.
I'm sorry?
That would mean it would be in Phase Two.
Because it wasn't listed.
That was intentional, yes.
Yeah, I agree.
It's listed by omission, yeah. All right, Councilmember Shepherd, and then, and then Lussay.
So it sounds like we've got a lot of changes here, and I'm not sure how that's going to impact the proposal as far as cost.
It will not affect the cost, because all the, all the items essentially are still in the contract. It's just moved them in two different phases and given more direction to my administration in terms of how to execute that. So it's, with the net benefit being, as Councilmember Mayhew earlier expressed, his concern was with cost and with speed or time on getting to the heart of the things that were the most pressing for the council. So at least this achieves speed, but it also, you know, eliminates any questions about any other operational issues that haven't been looked at in some years. Councilmember Lussay?
The question on cost and federal compliance were answered through the other questions. The only thing I would add is, does this extend the overall time to address the entire scope of the proposal and potentially put it out further, or is this still something that can be completed within the timeline that is stated through, let's say, it's listed through March, or increase the number of hours that would be estimated in terms of how long it would take to complete that work?
Mitch, maybe that, unless Bob, you want to take it?
No, it's really up to, I've asked Mitch Hansen to answer that question, he knows this proposal.
I, I think we can still accomplish it in the timeframe that's been given, but we'll certainly, we'll focus on the initial issues, we'll do the preliminary reporting back on the results of that. That, that little bit could, will just cause us a little delay in starting the second phase of it, but I still think that the total timeline is still doable.
Will it make a difference on the first phase to speed that up a little bit, or will, I mean, well, in other words, you've heard the goal, will that goal be achieved by doing this? Will it achieve anything by breaking into phases like that to actually speed up some of those higher priority items that's Councilmember Mayhew delineated?
Definitely, we'll, you'll be getting the results of that immedi, as soon as that first phase is done, rather than waiting till all of the work for each of those areas is done.
Councilmember Holloway?
Just to close the loop, though, the proposed phasing, you say, has no impact on schedule. Further, it has no impact on the overall cost?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the side impaired action? Seeing no one move forward, we come back to the motion, I'm sorry, we're still on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Now back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? All right, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on the side impaired action? Seeing no one move forward, all those in favor? This is the motion with the amendment, and approved now. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, council. How'd we do, Ann?
Good, great.
All right, is it, General Bill 18019, Resolution 1433, declaring an emergency, authorizing the selection of engineers pursuant to RCW 39.80.060 without the need for competitive selection process, and authorizing the execution of task orders with Aspect Consulting and RH2 Engineering.
Give me this one, Bob. Okay. The municipal water supply system Issaquahui utilizes as one of its principal sources a spring box water collection facility at a location in unincorporated King County, commonly known as Canyon Springs. There is obvious evidence of recent soil movement and a landslide that occurred sometime in mid-November 2017. The potential failure of the Canyon Springs water line due to landslide constitutes circumstances beyond the control of the city that present a real immediate threat to the proper performance of one of the city's essential functions, i.e., provision of potable water to city residents and businesses, and would likely result in a material loss or damage to city property if immediate action is not taken. Move to adopt Resolution 1433, declaring an emergency, authorizing the selection of engineers pursuant to RCW 39 dot 80 dot 060 without the need for competitive selection process and authorize the execution of task orders with Aspect Consulting and RH2 Engineering. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, approved, General Bill 18019, as stated by Councilmember Holloway.
So, quick background, again, landslide occurred. This water source represents the majority of our water, and it is really clean, excuse the pun, water. If we don't, if there is additional landslides or movements, we would be in dire straits by mid-summer as far as supplying the water demand the city has.
Council, so a quick point order, sorry to interrupt, who seconded that motion?
I don't know your voice.
Thank you, Councilmember Holloway, please continue.
Thank you.
And as a matter of fact, the other water sources are not of a quality comparable to this. As such, public works staff has requested that we immediately go out and look at these two individual companies to provide us options for stabilization and options of what we can do in the future to secure this water source. Stabilization is really imminent need, we need to do something quickly, it may have to wait for drier season, but we ought to look and see what those options are. With you.
Councilmember Summow, and then Jeans.
Two questions. How long would it take to go through the normal bid process for a project like this?
So, not, you know, going through the council process, I'm kind of new to the council process, but I'm assuming that it would take us at least a month or two to get it to, to where we could get a, go through the normal process to get engineers on staff or on board.
Just a point of clarification, mayor, if I can. Architect and engineer selections are not competitively bid like construction is. They go through an RFQ, a request for qualifications process, where potential consultants are interviewed, invited to submit proposals, they're interviewed, they're scored, and then the most suitable consultant is selected, and only then is a contract negotiated with, so price is not the factor in the selection process.
So, let me re-ask my question.
Councilmember Summow.
For an engineering, thank you, engineering perspective. So how long would it normally take, because what you're asking for here is an expedited process for us to circumvent the normal process and do this process without the competitive selection process? How long would that competitive selection process normally take?
I think about two months.
Okay. So, now, can I ask my follow-up question? So, if, if we're talking about because of weather not being able to do this, why, why would we not just go through the normal process if we can't take action on this in two, because of weather and the season anyway?
Yeah, well, I think that we want to try to get a stabilization on it as soon as possible. Some things we may be able to do in the interim which will put the, stack the odds in our favor, but we can definitely get started if we can do low-impact type work, where we can get up there in the spring and start making repairs, or at least stabilization efforts, sooner. So if we wait through the normal process, it puts us two months back, it probably gets us further towards summer. I think we can actually do the work sooner, and I think we should do the work sooner, because if we don't do anything, it's, we could lose it any time.
Councilmember Holloway, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jeans and then Holloway, okay. Councilmember Jeans?
So I'm interested in the, the issue of sooner than sooner. I mean, we can't do the work until the spring, and there are staff and others up there now. Are there things that they can do now to preserve it from further damage and sort of waiting for the, the, these engineering companies to activate?
Perhaps. So, you know, right now, we've got an initial evaluation. So, what we have now, we know that the thing is imminently unstable, it could collapse any time. What to do about it takes some analysis, so we need to kind of move into this analysis phase and exploration phase, where we go out and we get core samples, we do the geology, and we develop solutions, and then weigh those solutions and costs and develop an optimized strategy. That could take another couple of months.
And the, but the weather doesn't impede you from doing that now, core samples, things like that?
That's right, that's correct.
In other words, you don't know what all the solutions are right now, you need to get moving to do the analysis.
That's correct.
Councilmember Holloway?
Well, further, I think if we go out there and start pounding stakes without engineering direction, we could make it worse. So.
That's certainly true.
Get them on board, and based on their knowledge of geotech and everything else, move forward in a proper manner to make sure we do it right.
Okay.
Councilmember Jeans, you have another follow?
So I'm concerned about, this is like an impossible task, we can't do anything now. I mean, is there a greater thought of, this is our best source of water, and it is generally inaccessible in the wintertime, we don't really have a road to drive vehicles up there, we've got to pack, pack to get back there. Is there some thought in engineering and in planning to create better access to this very major water supply?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so. I think that's kind of the next phase, right? So this first phase has got to be to stabilize it, to keep it from, from losing it. But, we need to take that next step, I think that would be prudent for us to do, assuming that, you know, we want to keep this water source, and at least find out what it's going to take to preserve it into the future, and then we can weigh options for what we do, you know, we could maybe look for other water sources, but, you know, we can't know that until we actually, you know, maybe evaluate what we have, what it's going to take to create a long-term solution, and then weigh that against other options.
Okay. Councilmember Summow.
I think this is relative, relevant to the conversation, I guess we'll find out soon. Does this situation expedite any efforts we have in process for additional water rights?
No.
It's really not germane to the, the issue.
Okay.
He's asking if it's, if it says the nexus, oh, okay, yeah. Did you want to say something? All right, Councilmember Shepherd.
So I've been talking to the city of Issaquah, and I've been talking to the Department of Health about this situation, and I've got a number of concerns about what's going on here. One, as far as the hillside, is it, I have been advised that the first thing we want to do is to get a geotechnical report before we declare a state of emergency, and, and that comes from the city of Issaquah. The other is, so that would be one of the two that we're talking about doing without a normal competitive process. The other is the Department of Health, they had talked to us about our completion reports for these kinds of pipes, and we were supposed to be checking those, and we haven't been. And I would like to know, what is the status of getting those pipes inspected after they're installed?
Any other questions, Councilmember Shepherd?
Okay. The, yeah, the water plan for the city, I can't find it on our city's website, and I, I've been asking for these things, I've also asked someone to take me for a walk where this site is, so that I could see what's going on. I think it's important for us to see what's going on here.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you guys want to, who you want to take those questions, Dan.
I could speak to some of them. The completion reports are forms that are required to be submitted immediately following the construction of distribution mains that are included in the city's water system plan. We, to my knowledge, and staff can speak to this, have never been contacted by the Department of Health or informed of any deficiencies in filing of this, of those, it's called construction completion report, or CCR. We have them for the more recently constructed projects, including the 2008 disinfection system at Canyon Springs. The line that we're talking about here was installed in the night, early 1980s, about the same time that the legal requirement for the CCR came into being, and certainly well after the applicable retention period for documents. I don't know if the CCR for this line, if there was one, still exists. That's the, the legal issue there. The water system plan is available on the city's website, it was available before through two links, it's still available now through the document center on the new website, if you go to the city department's public works and then underwater, it's relatively easy to find.
And I know the staff has extended an invitation to all the councilmembers to tour the site if they'd like to, so just.
That's true.
Reach out. Is, was there other?
Yeah, I guess the other, the last question, I think, was a question, was the status of what we do when to complete a water line. Obviously, all water lines are inspected, they're cleaned first and inspected and tested, so there's, pressure-tested and purity-tested, so they are tested, and there's, there's always a report done when that's completed.
Councilmember Ross, then Holloway and then Shepherd.
So how often are they inspected? I mean, you were, someone was up there, they noticed that it had been washed away, and so you must be up there.
Yeah, well, typically, the pipes are underground, so they're not easy to inspect, you know, so I think they're inspected when they're completed, and, and that's, as far as I know, the last time we ever really inspect a pipe. As far as the, the line goes, we, we keep an eye.
Chairman, point of order.
Yes, sir.
This is not a construction discussion, therefore, I don't believe discussion of the CCRs and the water plan are germane to the subject tonight.
Yeah, point of sustain. Councilmember Shepherd.
Okay, so I'm not sure where I'm at here with, the Department of Health does have rules that we're supposed to certify.
Yeah, Councilmember Shepherd, I've sustained that the point of order, that, that's a question that's really not germane to the issue at hand with the council tonight.
Okay, so. Okay, so then the other thing I have is that I've sent an email asking to go walk the, the area where the, the pipeline is, and I am still waiting for a response.
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't seen that request.
Mayor, I can answer. We are currently, we're currently organizing that. The councilmembers will be made aware of it. We're going to try to get a schedule that can accommodate, perhaps, I have doubt all of yet once, we'll obviously get some schedules together and make those opportunities available.
Yeah, it's a good mile hike out there, so to do it individually with seven different councilmembers with staff would be pretty resource-intensive, and so we're trying to do it so we could find on calendars where, you know, two or three councilmembers could go per trip. Counselor Sumal, I'm sorry, I had a...
I have one, go ahead first.
There were a couple others.
I was going to propose we call the question. I think we've gone greatly outside the scope of what the amendment is called for, and I'm not going to be the guy that has the water system fail while we dink around waiting for, sorry, that was inappropriate. Now, while we dink around, while we continue to talk about stuff that is outside of the scope of this amendment.
Is there any objection if we take the vote now?
Yeah.
So, I don't know what happens. We didn't talk about call the question today.
Okay. Well, she's suggesting a short way, we usually do a vote on the call the question, but she said, is there any objection to calling the vote now? Okay, so with that, we're going to do a vote. All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have your hands, please, all those in favor of calling the question? All those opposed, the ayes have it, so the question's been called and the discussion comes to a close. I don't know if you were closing discussion from the public on this one, however. Jeff, thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to action? All right, seeing no one move forward, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, that's six, six pros and one against, or six ayes and one nay. All right, with that, we move on to, all right, any other items for the Finance Administration Committee?
No report.
Public Safety Committee Agenda Bill 18017, Resolution 1430, adopting the Snoqualmie Fire Department Strategic Plan 2017.
As part of the fire department's accreditation process, a strategic plan was required. Emergency Services International ESCI was contracted, contracted by the Snoqualmie Fire Department to facilitate and construct a five-year strategic plan, which has been completed. And this is for our review this week, and then it'll come back to council in two weeks.
It's correct. So, this is for introduction tonight. The work began back in September of last year. This is our second strategic plan for the fire department. The first one was established in 2015. It was a three-year plan. It expired on January 1st, so now we're picking up that.
Mayor, point of clarification.
Just say a point of order, bump.
Point of order.
I thought we did.
Did I not get a motion and a second on that one?
There's no motion because we're just, it's reading it.
Oh, it's just an introduction, okay.
Excuse me. I do want to clarify one issue, though, that, Mayor, in the summary statement, the contract was not led by the Snoqualmie Fire Department. It was led by the city of Snoqualmie. Make sure we're clear on that.
Okay, but we can correct that in the minutes. Chief, did you have something to say?
I don't know. That's a first for me, that it has been a point of order in the middle of a statement.
Mayor, again, point of order.
Okay.
The city attorney's pointing out to me that this is a resolution. It shouldn't.
It doesn't need it.
Doesn't need a, doesn't need a reading.
Did you want to do that for some reason?
And the recommended motion is to approve the plan.
Okay, so who, Counselor Ross, were you reading? I thought you read the mo, did you not read the motion?
I did not read it because it is, or to review it this week, and then it gives the councilmembers a chance to look at the strategic plan over the next two weeks and to approve it.
Okay, on the three-touch rule, you mean? Is that?
Yes.
Yeah, that was part of the discussion in the Public Safety Committee? Okay, well, I'll defer to the chair if that's the protocol you want to do is to just, you're basically presenting it for as a discussion item or for introduction tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, do any members have an objection to that?
No.
I'd ask you if you had an objection sheet, but you don't have a vote on that, so.
I like it that way.
All right. I think you were agreeable to that protocol.
Yeah, that was our intention, was to, because it's such a comprehensive document, and I believe there's a lot of really good information in there, I'd really encourage all of the councilmembers to look at it. It's a culmination of work of both the community and the fire department staff. This process, like I said, started late last, last year, and the document was developed. It includes looking at what the community's perspective is on how they feel about certain elements of the fire department, how the staff feels about the current leadership and the department as a whole, and then it segued into a mission and values statement and vision statement for the organization, moved later into a SWOT analysis, and that's where the work was done. Appendix B in the document has, if you just want to dive into the tasks part of it, it talks about what our goals are going to be over the next five years, and it kind of sets the roadmap in motion. As it's stated in the, in the summary statement, this is part of our accreditation effort, which is, the accreditation effort is a reminder, points towards excellence, and this is one of those practices and excellences to use strategic plan to guide our organization as the fire department.
All right, thank you, Chief. And just so the members of the public know that aren't familiar with it, we, we are moving toward what is often known as a three-touch rule, and particularly with a largely new council, we don't want councilmembers feeling rushed or blindsided with particular items that they haven't had the benefit of plumbing in more depth in the committee meeting. And so, the idea is that they at least see it, or it comes before the council in some form at committees or council meetings, at least three times before a filed vote, or at least at the third time would be the final vote, so they have time to ask questions, reach out to staff or the administration for clarification issues. And I know the chief would support this because it's a great document. It has some good, good internal survey that I've actually had a goal to try to, employee survey that I want to do citywide with all the employees here, so it's, it's a good read, and I, and I know he would, he would rather you take time to read through it and become familiar and ask questions than rush it through to you. So, any other questions or concerns tonight? Counselor Jeans?
This matter is involving the fire department's strategic plan, and the, the name of the company that provided these services is strange to me in that it's called the Emergency Services International. I would think that they would be specializing in emergency services thing rather than fire department things. Would you comment on that?
Sure. So, Emergency Services Consulting International, or ESCI, it's a local company. They do a lot of work in the state and around the nation. They actually have partnered with the International Association of Fire Chiefs with different programs. They offer a lot of different consulting services, everything from entry-level firefighting and promotional exams, recruitment efforts, right up through strategic planning, department analysis for fire departments where they'll come in and evaluate how the department is and looking for ways to improve the services they provide. So, this is right in their wheelhouse. They've done multiple strategic plans for a lot of different-sized fire departments. And when you look in the Pacific Northwest, they're really familiar with the culture and the process in which fire departments use up here. The, the person that led up the, the efforts for this strategic plan was the retired Van City of Vancouver Fire Chief, who I've worked with for quite a few years. I wasn't aware that he was going to be assigned the project when we moved into the, to the agreement. And the person helping him was also the retired fire chief out of the city of Bellingham. So, it's, we've got a lot of experienced fire chiefs that are helping with this process that work for them, and I think they did a really good job on this, along with the community and the staff that, that dove into this and answered a lot of hard questions.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions this time, council? Counselor Shepherd?
Well, I, I'm not sure if we're supposed to get into this, but I was reading them, and I noticed that the letters from the fire chief and the mayor are from my version. I, I'm not seeing it for this. And they referred to EMS volunteers. You talk about EMS volunteers?
Sure.
How does that work?
Yeah, sure, so the...
If you could address both of those.
Both of those, yeah, I will. So, the link has been updated on, should be on the agenda bill. We have the updated version online as well that has both the letters from the mayor and the fire chief. That was one of the things that came out of, that came out of the public safety meeting. One of the documents we were looking at didn't have that. Similarly, on the next agenda bill, you'll notice that hasn't been updated yet either. The reason why is the administrative staff for the fire department was out on Friday and on Thursday after the meeting and hasn't had a chance to get to that just yet, but that'll be done first thing in the morning. Regarding the EMS volunteers, we have, basically in the fire department, two forms of volunteers. We have one set that is a, what we call an EMS responder. They are only certified as an EMT, and they just work on the ambulance and they provide that support role in the fire department. That makes up about 80% of our incidents that we go on, and that's where, when our new staff comes in, we put them through EMT training first. Then generally, after about a year or two, when they feel comfortable in the EMT role, they will go off to fire training where they'll be trained as a firefighter, and then we'd use them as a firefighter EMT on the engine, putting out fires, things like that. So, currently, because we've lost some of our more senior volunteers over the last year, I want to say about 60% of our volunteer group is EMS, EMT, EMT staff volunteers. So, with some of those going off potentially to fire training later this year. So, they are actually making up more of the majority right now.
Which corresponds with the call date anyway. I mean, what, what percent of your calls are fire calls?
About 80. I'm sorry, about 80 is EMS, about, we, we go, yeah. On average, we, we average in the community about 11 structure fires per year, but about 20% of them are other types of fire calls, whether it's fire alarms ringing in the house or in a commercial building, or a car fire, or a grass fire.
Or just suspected fires or whatever.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, council?
You mentioned something about...
Counselor Shepherd?
Sorry. You mentioned something about you'd like to partner with Fall City.
Yeah, so that's been a previous action item on the public safety agenda, and I'm going to be giving a report at the next public safety meeting on that.
Okay.
That, that's an issue that's not part of this...
Not part of the strategic plan. Well, there is an element in there about...
The SWOT, yeah.
Yeah, and the strength, yeah, and the SWOT analysis that it talks about during this year, actually identifying partners.
Possible partnerships, okay.
Yeah.
And the difference between, and this is part of the SWOT, the difference between partnering with North Bend versus Fall City, I, I wasn't clear what the difference between the two cultures.
Counselor Shepherd, if you could speak into the microphone, please.
I wasn't, I was just curious what the difference, culture differences were.
Sure. Yeah, that's really part of a, a really larger discussion. So, when we look at fire departments and how we provide services, when we talk about Fall City, Fall City is culturally more like the city of Snoqualmie. We run what's called a combination fire department where we utilize both volunteers and career firefighters. They work side-by-side on the fire apparatus and on the aid cars. They're integrated totally into our department, and it's a community serviced, community-focused form of, form of fire service that we like to provide. North Bend Fire Department or Eastside Fire and Rescue is part of a larger regional organization. They're headquartered out of, down in Issaquah, and they have fire stations located throughout the area. Some of the fire stations are volunteers, other fire stations are career-only. I'm not sure about how they integrate their volunteers. As I understand it, they actually have their volunteers work at certain volunteer stations, and then the career staff works at other career fire departments. It's a totally different model than we operate. From within the organization, based on that survey that was performed, the firefighters actually prefer the model that we're running right now. They like that system where we are actually truly integrated with the volunteers, side-by-side working together, focusing on the community. The easiest way, if I could boil it down, is Eastside Fire and Rescue operates a regional type of fire service, which is about looking at a larger area and providing services in that bigger area, where the Snoqualmie Fire Department, similarly the Fall City Fire, District 27, it's a community-focused fire department where we provide, in my opinion, a lot more services to the community than a regional fire department does.
Chief, if you include, I find that map that shows all the districts to be very helpful in those conversations. Is that provided in here? I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
No, it's not provided in there, and also, I haven't had an opportunity to, to meet with Councilmember Shepherd yet, either, to do the organization...
That might be a good map to like, put in a packet, but it's germane to the council's understanding of just where these boundaries are, too.
Yeah.
All right, Counselor Lissay?
One of the things I saw when I was looking through the SWOT analysis, I found it interesting that you listed as a weakness of trying to do too much. I think as a, as a city, we pride ourselves on going above and beyond and have tried to do that. Maybe you can talk about how that, that weakness can be a strength, because I see it more as a strength, that we try to do too much.
Sure, yeah. So, one of the benefits of working in a small organization is you get to do everything, right? And one of the worst parts of working in a small organization is you get to do everything at the end of the day. An example of that, I, I think we do a really good job at, at doing a lot of things, and we want to make sure that we're doing them well. An example is how we handle our community service events, how we get our staff out there into the community, how whenever there's a public event going on, whether it's a, something at a park, or the lighting, we have, you know, Santa come on the fire truck. That's an example of how we're taking on a lot of things that, that, when we're already a very fairly busy system, if you will. But in, and the flip side of that is, recently, and this is some of an adjustment phase for us over the last year, we reached, recently introduced the inspection system where the firefighters are out doing fire and life safety inspections. You know, if I'm going to put things on a list as the fire chief, that's up in the top two, next to responding to calls. We're going to be out making sure the community is safe. That's an important piece of business, but that takes a lot of time out of our, out of our day. And that's where that conversation about taking on too much is one of the, the threats or the weaknesses that are out there, where that came into play, that we continue to load more and more up on our plate without really having a thoughtful conversation about what are some of those things that we can take off the plate and maybe outsource them to other departments. Departments or private companies, I'm sorry.
I would say in reading their strategic plan, one of their strengths, actually, they had multiple strengths, from their citizen input as well as internal staff, was their customer service, their quality staff, their leadership, and excellent community relationship. So, so I know that you're spread thin, but you, you know, the citizens really appreciate everything you've been doing, so.
Yeah, we're really proud of the results. Every time there's a public survey, EMS and fire and police always seem to float to the top of that list, and it's one of the conversations I regularly have with the staff about making sure how, how delicate of a thing that is, and that it's important that everything that we do really supports that mission of, we want to provide the highest level of service that we possibly can to every person we touch.
Thank you, Chief. That was very nice that you would acknowledge the police in that comment. That was...
I did. It was a charity. I'm looking kind of down back there.
He forgot to mention the Parks Department, too, Mayor. He forgot to mention Parks. That's a, that score's really high, too.
Yeah. Our fourth emergency service.
Any other discussion or questions, council? All right. Chief, thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this document prior to possible future council action? All right, seeing no one move forward. With that, we're going to move on to the next item on the Public Safety Committee Agenda, and that's a, well, again, for clarification, understand that that, that agenda bill is simply going back to the committee that will come forward at the next, we're scheduled council meeting. Moving on to Agenda Bill 18018, Resolution 1431, adopting the Community Emergency Management Plan.
The City of Snoqualmie Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, CEMP, is for use by city and public safety officials in providing emergency management proceeding during and following a disaster. It gives the policies, information, recommendations, and guidance necessary for the officials making operational decisions. And this is also for introduction only, that'll come back in two weeks.
Okay, so just for discussion tonight, then?
Correct.
All right. Chief?
Just really briefly on this, this is the document that we use when the ground shakes or when we have an emergency or disaster in the, in the community, and when we do our exercises and drills.
Ground shakes or the water comes up.
Or the water rises.
Water comes up, yeah, whatever the disaster is. This is an extremely comprehensive document with multiple emergency support functions in it. It, in my office, the book is about, it's in a three- or four-inch binder. So, although in this document, which we're going to get it updated tomorrow morning, as I explained, this contains the basic plan, which is kind of the overarching document that we use that communicates who's responsible for doing what in a disaster. Later on in the document, which will have those appendices and the other emergency support functions added to it, it communicates more in-depth of who's responsible for what and what types of documents we use as, as an example, the disaster framework within the county, how we fold into that. So, again, this is a, this is a document that's multiple hundreds of pages long. It takes some time to get through, and my office is open if you have any questions at any time while you're going through it.
All right, Counselor Ross?
So, this is a, this is an existing plan that you, that was approved by the city council, I don't know how many years ago.
2013.
Okay.
That's correct.
And there's just some minor updates, and so if you look at the first couple pages of the plan, it'll show what those changes are.
Right, and we hired an outside contractor coming in to evaluate it. It was a recently retired full-time emergency manager from another city. That came in last year, we utilized grant funds to do that. It went off to the state, because it's required to be adopted by the state, and then came back for, for adoption by the city. So there are some changes in there, obviously the cover and things like that that need to be updated, but that would be part of the process when we, once we get into final form.
Councilmember Jeans, and then Councilmember Shepherd.
In my 12 years on the council, I can really only remember one real emergency management situation, it was serious flooding. And as a council member, I had a role, and I understood that role way back when, and I would encourage all of us to read the role of council members in that emergency situation that we have. We've got a place to go, we've got things that we will, that we are responsible for doing in conjunction with all the things that these emergency people are doing. So encourage us to read about what we do, in addition to all the other stuff.
Pretty much every staff person, almost to a person, shifts into a different function and role when we're responding to emergency events, so.
Mm-hmm.
We don't, we don't send folks home. Yeah, oh, Councilmember Shepherd, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the one thing that I noticed in Section 5C, it says something about add list of plans that this CEMP touches, and so it looks like maybe that you're supposed to have something inserted there.
Okay.
So, and I also want to tell you that I think that this work is just magnificent.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Councilmember Sumal?
While we're on the topic of magnificence, I know I shared this with you and, oh, no, you'll get your chance.
Bring the police up now.
Don't worry.
I couldn't resist, sorry.
Don't worry, chief, I wasn't looking past you. The, and I, I shared this for the rest of city council, that A, wasn't on the phone call with me, and B, was not in our council meeting, but two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, I think we, whatever we means, had a fatality accident on Highway 18, and a friend, I guess you could call her a mine, was the, was the car that, the first car that wasn't involved in the accident. She watched it happen, as did her two elementary school children. And I talked to her the very next day, wanted to make sure she was okay, and she had just absolute, just was so appreciative of how fast our fire department was, because we were first on the scene, not surprisingly, how, how quick you were to both get the people out that were in harm and eventually deceased, but also take care of the bystanders that saw it. You had your stuffed animals on site for those two kids, and I understand that they took donuts, that some of you weren't around to see the next morning. Her kids didn't go to school that next morning, but I'm pretty convinced that they were able to go the following day because of, in part, because of how well you guys handled that situation. And so, super easy to critique a lot of things that go on in a city, or in a state, or a nation, or a house, but you guys, as usual, absolutely nailed that. And I wasn't involved, but I was certainly proud to be a citizen of Snoqualmie, hearing that, and so I wanted to pass that along and make that a public statement, so everyone could benefit from, from what I heard from that citizen of Snoqualmie. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank, thank you for passing that on as well. I have, I'm going to be making contact with the firefighters that were on that incident, actually, and I'll certainly direct them to this video so that they can see, hear your comments directly from you.
And I have the name of the individual, if you'd like it, offline.
Yeah, that, that would be great. I know, I was in the station when her family came by the next day. In fact, the firefighters that were on duty that night, the, the incident occurred, reached out specifically when they saw it on social media to try to make sure that the contact was made, and to try to really break down some of those barriers. It's, you know, it's easy for us to remember that we have somebody that's hurt, but there's usually other patients that are involved with those incidents. It's the kids, it's the people that witness it, it's the people that may have seen the tragedy, and really trying to care for those people is important, and that's, that's that excellence level, that's that piece we were talking about, that customer service that, you know, the firefighters know that's an important part of their job, and it's about taking care of everybody on that scene, and, you know, as much as it makes you feel good, it makes me even better, it makes me feel really proud of the service that they provide here, and it's, I really feel blessed to be part of this department, because they do great work.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions on the Community Emergency Management Plan?
I just wanted to say, having been an individual who did unexpected off-roading on I-90. Your team was excellent in handling of me, in handling of my wife and children who came to the accident scene. I didn't get grumpy till I got to the hospital, but that's a different story.
And you still have your teddy bear, right?
I didn't get a teddy bear. I just.
All right, this is.
You guys do.
We need to refocus on the Community Emergency Management Plan, folks. While that wasn't germane, that was, well, we're citizens and folks to hear, it's a great, great event, a great response to an event recently. Any other questions or comments pertaining to the Community Emergency Management Plan?
Not just that.
All right, Chief, thank you. Are there any citizens that want to comment to this item prior to possible future council action? All right, see no one move forward. With that, we will move on. Are there any other, any other report for the Public Safety Committee?
No report.
All right. Moving on to Committee of the Whole, we have a few discussion items. Of course, there are a number of reports from the staff that are written in the first meeting of the month, so.
Mayor, could I just request for information? I'm just, and I may have missed this earlier, which is, just tell me that, but I had hoped that we were going to hear tonight just a, at least a brief update on the hearing examiner, and I thought that might appear in the Committee of the Whole, but I don't know if it's appropriate to ask about that.
No, no, that's, that's absolutely appropriate time for councilmembers to bring any items that they want addressed in Committee of the Whole. Bob, you want to address that real quick, or Bob, Officer Banker, Bob Larson?
Sure. I can just give a, a quick update. We, councilmate, remember, there was a fair amount of discussion at the last meeting in December about the code requirement for a written complaint as triggering the process. We did receive a written ethics complaint in hand on December 19th. It was put in the ethics hearing officer's hands the very next day, on the 20th. I hand-delivered it, and so he is often performing the work called for by the code. You may recall the applicable section calls for the hearings officer to make a determination of probable cause, and, yes, no, probable cause and legal sufficiency within 30 days after receipt of the complaint. So, given that we have 31 days in December, that would be on January 19th, and that if he makes those determinations, then would proceed to conduct an investigation and schedule a hearing as per the code. So that's where we are at the moment.
Okay. Other items on the Committee of the Whole agenda, or the council retreat draft agenda? Bob, did you want to address that, City Administrator?
Sure. Staff was, or excuse me, staff provided council with a draft agenda for the city council retreat, which is scheduled for Friday and Saturday, January 26th and 27th, at the, the club at Snoqualmie Ridge, the former TPC. It's open to the public. You have a copy of the, what I'll call the very brief agenda, but then on the, on the backside, it has a little bit more detail that the facilitator, Marilyn Beard, provided. And she asked that I just check in with council, just to confirm that this is the, the items that'll be discussed. She's preparing that as we speak, and if there's any other issues you want to present, she is going to reach out to each of the, the seven councilors and the mayor to talk individually about what your expectations are, just trying to get to know you more, to get to know you better. I think she only knows maybe two of you from previous retreats, Councilmember Holloway and Jeans, but she'll, she'll, she'll be conducting those interviews, or, excuse me, meetings, the next couple of weeks. You should be hearing from her brief momentarily, and O.T. is trying to help set up those, those meetings. But if there's no, no other comments, we'll carry forth as we have it here in front of us. On the second day, you'll have our interim finance director, Rob Orton, present in the afternoon. We'll get more detail about his presentation as well, and we'll start, as we get nearer here, in the next week or two, we'll start loading up the, the agenda packet, if you will, and we'll make sure the council's aware of that link, and we'll provide that information to you as we continue on towards the Friday and Saturday, the January 26th and 27th.
Okay, any questions on that? Councilmember Lussay, and then Councilmember Jeans?
I want to, thanks for putting this together and the, the descriptions and things. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is that this is turning into a presentation to the council, and I think what we need to make sure we focus on is this is a council retreat. That, being a new council member, I'm interested in working with my colleagues and determining what direction we're going to go and what direction we're going to pursue. I would stress to staff that while input and, and information is important, I think what's truly important about, about a retreat is that we discuss, discuss the agendas of the coming year or, and/or whatever the time period at which we decide to, to apply those things to. So I think from a, from a standpoint, I'd like to see the agenda reflect that. Right now, it very much looks like we're sitting and listening, and I want, I'd like you to address that.
I'll just kick it to Councilmember Jeans, because I suspect she'll address some of those.
Actually, that gives me an opportunity to address that very point. If you would have seen this agenda in its first or second iteration, you would particularly have that concern, and we worked very hard to create an agenda that would accomplish two things in my mind. One, it's not a two days of presentations, and two, it is an opportunity for us to more clearly work together and to work big-picture items, and it is our retreat, it is our opportunity to not only get to know each other better, but interact, interplay. It's actually sort of a knee-jerk opposite of what happened in the last retreat. Unfortunately, it was sort of the, the perfect storm that occurred because of business conflicts. I mean, most of us work, and we have schedules, and the perfect storm hit for that last retreat, and sometimes there were three, maybe four council members when, when there was discussion or opportunity for interplay, so we really missed that the last time. And especially for new council members, and I'll include five of you in that group of new council members, this is just sort of a first opportunity to, to get to work together, and, and sort of the idea of a retreat is to get away from the rigmarole of daily council meetings, and I don't want to say, tell Ann to stay home, and, and we won't focus on procedures, we'll focus on interaction, and that, the goal of this is, is to interact. And as you're, I'm sorry that you, if you read that, you read it as though it's going to be presentations, but I think you'll find it to be a very interactive council retreat for us.
Councilmember Sumal?
So my, I, I guess I sort of share Matt's concern, councilmember Lussay, but I'm willing to see it play out, so I'm glad that concern has been noted. My only, it's not even a concern, my question would be the, what appears to be another parliamentary piece on that afternoon. I mean, clearly, from today's meeting, we have this completely figured out, so I, I'm just, I'm wondering, trying to balance what Matt's saying, and based on the fantastic presentation and training that we had today, I'm just wondering if that, I'm not saying there's not more to learn, but as we prioritize, I'm just wondering if that is a spot in the agenda that we could potentially forego to do other things. I don't, unfortunately, I'm being, I'm being critical without having a solution, but.
Mayor, if I could, these, if I could clarify, on Friday afternoon, I believe you're referring to Councilmember Sunwol, Friday, January 26th, starting at 1:00, it says council's rules and procedures, not rules of procedures. This is something quite a bit different than what you had tonight.
Former proprietary.
This is council's own, what we would call the rules of engagement, how you get along and how you conduct your business amongst each other, has nothing to do with parliamentary procedure.
Oh, so we won't have Ann at all?
That's correct.
Oh, so that's not an Ann section?
Right.
Well, now I'm kind of sad, actually, because it's sort of fun.
The rules of procedure, Ann referred to those sometime, several occasions this evening, those are adopted by the council every couple of years with revisions. They reflect anything from the way the agenda, the pieces of the agenda that you see right now can center into the order, all of those things are specified in the rule, the way public hearings are conducted, council committees, you have another item coming up tonight about possibly revamping that. Any changes you would make to the committee structure would need some changes to the rules.
So it's the rules of how we operate?
Correct.
Okay.
They're, that's the council's rules.
Yeah, your proprietary rules.
And they're adopted by resolution.
So we can review, so you mean, you can read through those, and certainly we'll be invited to advance the retreat, but you may have questions and interpretations about what does this mean, that mean, there might be certain tweaks.
If you can bring dinosaurs just for fun, that would be awesome.
Thought this would be a great time, since you have, obviously, five newer council members now, it would be a great time to review these.
Yeah.
And we have council rules and procedures. What we've lacked, and we've had some numerous discussions on in the past, in fact, in the past retreat, is what's called rules of engagement, which is kind of an overlay. Rules of engagement have to do with more of a, just a voluntary commitment to one another, you know, sometimes going to different legislative bodies, or like in the caucus room, standing at the King County Council, that just sort of said, here's the things we, you know, we'll commit to in terms of not blindside each other, you know, supporting the common effort, and whatever you lay out in there. We could bring some templates and examples of other legislative bodies to discuss, so that's, that's where we want the focus to be more, and more interactive, as you're, and Councilmember Lussay, about what you want for this body, as you're now sort of, you know, establishing a new protocol with new members.
I'll just, I'll just follow up on that, then. I would, you know, I see that, and I, I'm willing to, as Councilmember Sunwol said, to go along with this and watch it play itself out. It'd be encouraging to have the agenda address that a little bit more in detail, where we, where we have council discussions versus staff presentations. That's where maybe I'm not seeing where that break is with, if it's a, if it's a presentation versus a discussion, and have those sorts of things established in the agenda as it's, as it's developed.
There's a little bit more detail on the backside of that, what I'll call the draft, but the, I'll just echo what Councilmember Jeans said earlier, there were specific instructions to not have presentations, with one exception, that's the latter part of the second day. We felt there was a good tutorial to get council started on the 2019, 2020 annual budget, which you'll need, and we thought the sooner the better, and this would be a great time to do, provide that. But that, again, will be interactive.
Okay.
And yes, excuse me, Councilmember Lussay, there will be more detail. What the facilitator, Marilyn Beard, wants to do is talk to each of the individual council members, especially with the mayor pro temp, get some sense of, of the types of things you want to discuss, and then create a much more detailed agenda based on that, because there's a lot of material that she could be going through, and she mentions that on the, on the backside on some of these, especially rules of procedure. She can't cover all of it. She wants to focus in on what consensus of the council may want to discuss.
So, or the only thing I'd add with, Marilyn Barrett is a former finance director and current deputy city administrator for the city of Kirkland, and she brings just a, I mean, she's been in the business, I think, close to 30 years, brings a wealth of experience and perspective, and sometimes it's just nice to have another perspective from another community. She's done several retreats years ago, before we brought Andy Ballard on board in the past, and she's, yeah, I think, just a good-sounding board to sort of get a outside perspective on, is, is, are we normal, or is this kind of common, and, you know, explore those items. I'm sorry, one of the councilmers had a hand up over here. Councilmember Sunwol, was that you?
Believe it or not, it was not.
Oh, okay.
No.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item, counsel? All right. Look forward to the retreat. With that, we'll move on to the E-City Gov Alliance Inter-local Agreement.
Oh, wait a minute, you skipped an item.
It's missing on my notes, if I did.
Change from four council.
Oh, that was my next item, but if you want to take that one first, we can do that. Mine were just in a different order, my notes.
Go ahead, go with the E-City Gov, we'll come back.
All right, that's a quick one, we can, PJ?
Good evening, counsel. There should be a one-page synopsis of E-City Gov Alliance on your desk. Essentially, what we're, what this discussion here is, we will be bringing, we're hoping to bring back an inter-local agreement change with E-City Gov, and council has asked us to provide an overview of what E-City Gov Alliance is, especially with new council members that are just being, that have been on-boarded. E-City Gov is essentially a nonprofit organization that we have been a part of for quite some time, 2004. It's been quite some time. They have, they really focus on the customer side of, of things. That means they, they, they look at the developers, they look at the citizens as the customer first, and their concept is to provide a, a portal that's essentially a one-stop shop for, for citizens when it comes to building permits, when it comes to government jobs for, within the membership, and for some economic development. Due through a recent change within E-City Gov, they're restructuring their, the organization so they can be a little bit more nimble. So with that, there's an inter-local agreement that is going to be presented to council at some point, I believe in the 22nd, for, for review, and this is just an overview for, for council to look at. If you have any questions, feel free. Essentially, the portfolio or the, the services that we subscribe to are Gov Jobs Today, and basically, it impacts HR. This is how we recruit for city jobs. My Building Permit, which is the largest of, of the portfolio, this is for building permitting, any permits online, and NorthwestProperty.net, which is more for economic development. Not well utilized, it's probably going to be retired at some point, or sunset at some point. The two biggest ones, of course, are My Building Permit and Gov Jobs Today.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sunwol?
Will this be going before the each, will you be taking this for each committee ahead of time?
Yes, so we brought it to the Finance and Administration Committee, and we are bringing it, this is an overview for you, for the entire council, we're bringing it back to Parks and Public Works, and also Community Development Committee.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councilmember Holloway, then Lussay, and then Ross.
Well, and this was just out of the F and A, we requested one slide, five bullets, but we requested an overview of E-City Gov, because we knew it was going to be a discussion discussion coming up for background information. Salient points for us are three services, the primary one being My Permit, which is the vast majority you'll see here of $16,000, and then the other two of Property and Government Jobs Today. So we'll be redoing our agreement with them for these services.
I think you explained previously that we currently use eTrackit for building permitting?
That's correct.
What's, what's the impact of switching to MyBuildingPermit.com? Is there a lost, loss of information? Is there a transfer of information? And is there a cost that is attributed to doing that, to shifting over, and is that included here?
It is actually. We migrated to Trackit from Permit Plan, and we, as part of that migration procedure, is the integration with My Building Permit.
Well, just a follow-up then, is assuming previous permits, what's, one of the nice things of those, those eTrackit or MyBuildingPermit.com is the history. Will those previous histories from eTrackit be searchable in MyBuildingPermit.com?
Yes. We migrated all data from the previous system to the new system.
Okay, thanks.
It's nice to have those plans available. It used to be thrown out after a few years. Councilmember Ross?
So it shows the budget cost for 2018. Have those costs changed? Are those going up?
It does change specifically for My Building Permit. It's based off of a rolling five-year average. So as, as, you know, as the building boom goes up and down, that cost changes.
PJ, refresh my memory, and I think this was under your time, or Bob, or Rob, what I thought was kind of missing in this report was the fact that when we went to that full kind of electronic permitting process, we also helped, basically paid for itself and then some with the new fees that we employed to, and the developers were more than happy to pay the fee because the cost savings for them to do it this way versus coming down and sitting at a countertop was significantly less, so they jumped all over it. So I wanted to make clear to the council that this was largely cost neutral in terms of the issue.
That is correct. We actually charge a technology fee of, is it five or?
Three and seventy-five.
So 3% of which, 1.3% of it goes to pay for this $15,000 fee, and then 1.7% gets put in a special fund for replacement of the existing permitting software.
And hardware as well.
And hardware, yes.
Councilmember Sunwol?
He answered my question. Thank you.
Anybody else who's had their hand up? Any other questions, council? Thank you, PJ.
Thank you.
Mayor, I am, I have two items, I'm just not sure where to bring them up. They're just very quick questions for staff that came out of the very beginning of the meeting, the public comment section. I don't know when it's appropriate.
Now's a good time to bring it up.
Okay. They're just very quick. One is, there's a question about downtown Christmas lighting standards and timing when they go up and down, whether, you know, what the city's role is in, in that. Do we, I assume we should refer that to staff and then is there, would citizens, is there someone on staff that citizens should just go to when they have questions like that?
Dan, you want to speak to that real quick?
Yes, councilmember Mayhew. They can just direct, direct it to me. Be happy to address it and work with my staff and see what we can do to accommodate.
All right, perhaps you could consider reaching out to that citizen that asked that question with an answer. That'd be fantastic.
Absolutely.
And I'm sorry, sir, could you identify who you are for the public?
Oh, Dan Marcinco, Parks Public Works Director, City of Snokeville.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Just didn't recognize your new haircut.
And a tie.
Councilmember Mayhew?
And then the only other question that was brought up, and I suppose perhaps this gets, maybe staff could bring this up in the appropriate committee, but talking, maybe a little follow-up at the right committee with this topic of how the city sort of follows through when developers make commitments, they get approved for a project by city council, you know, what the process is, maybe just review with the appropriate committee what staff's doing to follow up to make sure those projects really turn out the way that they were approved to be done. No need to take up time here, it's like a committee matter, but just if that could go on to an agenda to be followed up on.
Certainly, I would categorize that as another one that we need to obviously address with the, I'll give it the new council majority, that's something we need to educate, release and inform on. I think it'd be best suited for the Parks and Public Works since it seems to be an engineering and/or consultant base with projects and development, and perhaps even with Mark Coffin and his committee as well.
Yeah, we'll never be community development.
Community development as well, yes. Maybe both of them would be appropriate. That way we will cover the, I think, at least the vast majority of the council members.
All right, Councilmember Mayhew, in that question, are you also addressing the issues about, there's some comments made in a very public fashion, impugning the reputation of a consultant that we use. It seems to me that'd be a question that could be addressed as well.
Oh.
Dan, another question on Partite, you know, why would we be working with Partite again, giving an auditor's issue that came up?
I'm not sure we need to take time here. I'm just saying at the appropriate committee, yeah.
Can we put that, put that on as a discussion item for Public Works?
And, and Community Development. We'll do that, both.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
I don't know if I missed it, but I see that there's a proposal to change from four council.
Councilmember Shepherd, if you could speak into the microphone, please.
So there was a proposal to change from four council committees to?
That's our next topic, yeah.
Oh, okay.
All right. And I'm sorry, that's my fault. On your agenda, that that item was supposed to come first, mine, it was switched in my notes.
Oh, okay.
So, so you caught that correctly. All right, any other items for Committee of the Whole before we move on to this one? All right. So we move on to the, the last item I have, which is the proposal to change from four council committees to the Committee of the Whole. Just cue that up for discussion.
Let me do that one up.
Mayor Pro Tem, I don't know if you want to keep that on?
I can do that. Let me put my Mayor Pro Tem hat on. Just because I have to do that before I get in. Can we bring up the, there is at least a proposal in desire. Again, you've heard the three-touch conversation of potentially restructuring our meetings so that on the odd weeks, we are having a Committee of the Whole, in which we can review all of the agenda items, regardless of functional area. I presume then setting up the agenda for the following council to go from there. All right. All right. So let me, let me now take my, yeah, that one. And I'm, let's not get into implementation date until we make a decision, but here. But do a Committee of the Whole first and third Mondays at 6:00 PM here? Wait a minute, go back up, go back up, go back up. Hang on. Okay, stop. All right. Basically, the agenda would be the informal discussion, but no decision on specific agenda bills, unless we, you may have a decision that says we're holding the agenda bill, but not a yea or nay on the agenda bills. Staff would prepare and present information on all the issues. Okay? We would propose at this stage, although I think it's non-german discussion right here, no live streaming, no recordings of the meeting, no public comment. We can get it, those are probably a broader subject than just this committee structure. And the tentative suggestion is to shoot this for nine months to a year, see how it's working, and then do a check and see how we want to go from there. Okay? If I may take?
Yeah, I mean, with the idea, again, this is just an idea we're floating to, to address the issue of sometimes the council meetings go until 11:12 at night or 11:00 at night. That, understandably, with a lot of new council members, they want to develop a certain trust level on all these issues, and if you don't have a chance to, if you're only seeing three or four agenda items in your committee, but not seeing the rest, and you want to plum those in depth, the council meeting doesn't really give you an opportunity unless we're here until midnight. So this was a way to try and provide more opportunities. So a lot of pros and cons with that, maybe some other options, but we just, anyway, wanted to, was Bob Larson or the city administrator's intent in mind to just try to provide some maybe other creative ways of coming at this, to provide a comfort level and help the council not feel blindsided and come up to speed on all these complicated issues.
So can, let me take my Pro Tem hat off, put my Councilman Holloway hat on. I am not supportive, in support of this particular proposal.
Hi, Griffin.
Oh, sorry. I am not in support of this particular proposal. I think there's some other things we can look at. My concern is the group dynamics changed significantly from three to seven, and I'm not sure this will eliminate our midnight discussions. Where three council members can dive down on a subject and get it done in an hour, maybe hour and a half, seven council members will all want to have our little say in it, and we'll drive it to midnight. Okay? So I'm not sure this helps us eliminate the time. I think there are other ways, and I'd like to have a discussion once we disposition of looking at getting more cross-pollinization of council members into other committees. I'll just, let me throw it out. I think we can explore ways of, of properly noticing and properly administering our council, our committee meetings, such that non-seating council members may attend, so that they can hear that in-depth conversation directed by the three sitting council members and participate as public in those meetings. And we stay true to the public meeting rules we are restricted to if we do that. There may, Bob will have to, Mr. Sterbank will have to advise us on what the administrative procedures are there that we would have to adhere to, what notification procedures, but there's at least a path under which we can open the attendance up of the committee meetings. But I think there's benefit in those committee meetings focusing in on their functional areas and as directed by those three sitting council members, deep dive on the subjects.
And you're suggesting, so it doesn't creep into another council meeting, so you would, everybody would basically agree to abide by that person, the third or fourth, I mean, sorry, the fourth or fifth or sixth or seventh council member coming into the meeting, is there for observation, just to be informed and not partaking in the deliberations and the debates or discussions? Correct?
Well, let's have that, they are, I think they are non-voting member, non-voting members of the committee. Question is?
Are they participatory?
Well, well, agreed. I think there's a question there, are they participatory or are they public, or are they another class of not, they cannot participate due to those rules? I, it, I want to have that discussion with council.
Councilmember Sunwol, Councilmember Lassie, and then Councilmember Jeans.
So I love this. I'm not going to lie. I like this for a lot of reasons. I like, I like the fact that it basically just, it locks down Monday nights, if indeed that was what we, the day we stuck with. Makes it easier, I think, for, for planning for some, for, to have just Mondays be city night. What I, the other thing, I took a, my concern with Brian's counterproposal is if it's not participatory, then we, I think we've largely defeated the purpose that we're trying, it needs to be participatory, or we're, just listening doesn't do a lot. I mean, it needs to be participatory, or we just punt it until the council meeting where we get participatory, and then we haven't solved any problems. I did a truly random, just as I thought of the cities in my head, I looked at 11 cities in King County. I was surprised that seven of the 11 I looked at do it in some form out of this way. They call them work sessions, they call them workshops, and most of them have them on the opposite Mondays that were city councils aren't happening. The only four of the 11 that I saw that do committees are North Bend, Kirkland, Redmond, and Renton. Now, that's not a reason to do it. I'm just saying, there are lots of cities that make this work, and I, I think, I actually think the long meetings of the month would be these. And the council meetings would be the shorter meetings, as we will have vetted most of this stuff, and so that we're not going till midnight. What's increasingly become, getting out of here before 11 has been very difficult. I think that's a drain on council members. I think that's a drain on public participation. And so I would like to see us tidy up our council meetings and increase participation amongst everyone, because I think there's some great ideas. Now, to Brian's point, those meetings will go till 1:00 AM if we don't have rules and some, well, rules around limits on comments, how many times Sean can say stuff, those types of things. I'm not trying to make one meeting go long. I don't know what I'm saying, I'll stop. But I'm, I'm very much in favor of at least trying this for 2018.
Or if you're doing a three-touch, you know, over a couple, two, three weeks, at least it spreads out more evenly to the two weeks, perhaps. Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry. Who was next? Lassie, and then Jeans, and then Mayhew?
I'm not entirely on board, because I also think that the idea that these Committee of the Whole meetings will, will run far past midnight. In any case, if you consider that this is now combining four committees into one meeting, each committee that holds its, currently can have discussions that last on each item from anywhere to, from 10 to 30 minutes. You exponentially add those all together, and you're going to be running into a situation where those, those, those meetings will, these council, Committee of the Whole meetings will run long. I think as a council member, we need to remember that we are, we all have an obligation to be aware of, study, and be knowledgeable in every committee bill that's in front of us, regardless if we're in the committee or not. We all have email. We have the ability to ask the questions if we're reviewing the information and provide those either to the committee chair or to the other committee members or to the mayor if it relates to that discussion. I'm willing to give it a try, not for nine months. I don't think we need nine months to figure out if this is effective and, and has value. The last thing I'll say is that I also question if three members is appropriate in a committee that doesn't create quorum and doesn't need a non-voting member or voting member, how does all seven of us in the same room together equate to that? It would make sense that you could have, just committee meetings would have more than three members be in those meetings, no different than you would a Committee of the Whole meeting. I mean, it's public notice, it's, it's available, it's out there for the public to be aware of it. I don't see the difference. I don't see why a Committee of the Whole would be treated differently from each individual committee member from a notification or, or quorum situation.
Councilmember Jeans and then Councilmember Mayhew.
I share Councilmember Holloway and Councilmember Lassie's concerns. I have those same concerns, but I'd want to try it on a trial basis. We've set a goal of having the meeting go from 6:00 to 8:30. That's a challenge for us to not listen to ourselves talk sometimes. Sometimes we just listen to ourselves talk. I think it's an opportunity for us to tell the staff, particularly to be succinct in making presentations to us. Those have to be, they have to be, for the most part, shortened. And I like the idea of the three-touch in that often now, we don't get more than a, well, more than a two-touch. We probably average a two-touch. So I think we're sort of, even if we compare ourselves, compare, see how these other cities do it, we are inventing a wheel, and we're going to see if the wheel works. In the course of a couple of months, perhaps that's as long as, it'll take us to settle into our own rhythm, don't feel that we all have to talk. We can let council members sort of lead the discussion as though they were in their committee, and when the subject of the fire department comes up, then those people who are on the Public Safety Committee might be leading the discussion. But at least it'll give us an opportunity to hear material. So I think it's a nice opportunity for us to better manage our time, because I think if, if we're on a two-committee meeting cycle on those off weeks, it's not unusual for that to be four hours, five hours in those committees, including the travel to and from. So you get to, you get to count that savings of time and cutting off the number of meetings you go to. So I'd be, I'd be in favor of us trying it, the matter of setting nine months is, to me, not important. Let's just try it long enough to see if we like it.
Councilmember Mayhew?
So.
And then Councilmember Ross.
I am, I'm not at all for this. I'm, I think, now, I've already done some faulty math tonight, so you may have to correct me on the math. But I think of, if I just think about the topics being discussed, and I add up all the committee meetings and the number of hours spent in the committee meetings, and I just don't see how a two-and-a-half, one, two-and-a-half hour meeting is going to get through that many topics. It just seems like mathematically, we will drastically reduce the amount of work we're able to do. I also worry about having meetings where seven of us talk instead of three. There comes that point in every meeting where everything that needs to be said has been said, but not yet by everyone. And so the meeting goes on. And so the meeting goes on. And so, I worry about that. I think that I'd rather see us keep this as an idea in reserve and first try, I think this three-touch rule is absolutely a fantastic idea. I think one of the biggest, one of the biggest things I try and do when I see issues is send questions into staff. And frankly, most of my questions get answered from that interaction. Having a three-touch rule will absolutely facilitate that kind of thing happening. I'm very much in favor of, I had the same observation as council member Lasse about the idea of, well, a council of, a council of the whole has more than three members and so we have the same public noticing requirements. And I think that we could adopt rules that would allow, so we do the public noticing required for every committee meeting, allow every committee member, sorry, every council member that thinks they want to attend in order to be, but, but the goal would be, they attend in order to get their questions answered through the three-touch rule. So by the time we're sitting here at council, we don't go till 10 or 11, well, no later than 10. I think that's what our, our rules, our council rules call for, because we've had those questions answered in committee. And I think using three, we can adopt some rules. I don't like the idea of further limiting, I know some of our committees don't take public comment, but some do. I don't like the idea of further limiting public comment. I think we should go the other direction. I think we need to be very careful about that. I think we need to restrict the time. There were some comments made about how much time is spent. I think we need to be much more strict about that in committees. But I think our goal should be, get the work done in the committees, including obtaining all the public input that we can, so that we've really thought that through at the committee level, go into depth with staff, using the three-touch rule, really come to council with an expectation that we're all pretty much ready to, to vote on these matters. And I'd really rather see us pushing the work to the committees as a way of solving the problem, which I agree with. And I think we get, I think we'll be perceived as more transparent. I worry that this committee of the whole will result in a perception of actually less, less transparency.
Councilmember Mayhew, just point of clarification, if you're proposing noticing the committee means to the public that, in other words, that a quorum or more could be present, are you seeing the, in excess of the three council members that are on the committee, if more council members show up, you see them as being participatory?
No, I see them as, well, I, I think that, sort of along the lines of just being a member of the public and participating in that fashion. The goal, what we would do is set up a set of rules where the goal is this, we want to surface council members' questions, make sure that those get addressed during the committee.
Or public's questions.
And the public's, absolutely. And so that's our goal. We adopt rules so that there's, the three committee members are really the ones doing the work of the committee, but we set up some rules so that the other council members who may be in attendance are not participating as committee members, but are, have a method to input their questions.
Just play it as public.
Participation as public, I think would solve that. Just make sure their questions are, are considered as part of that committee process. So, that would be my, what I would be in favor of.
If there's not a quorum issue, though...
Or I'm sorry, Councilmember Ross was next.
Um, thinking about the, I can see, on the committee of the whole, you're saying it goes from 6:00 to 8:30. And I'm the Parks and Public Works Committees, and some of the projects that we talk about, we're there for maybe an hour and a half, because we're working on a lot of different projects, and we need to get the detail about it. Same with public safety, you know, we'll be in the, in the committee meeting, and they'll talk about, well, maybe you should propose a ladder track, or let's talk about that accreditation. It's sometimes, having a committee of the whole, it's gonna reduce the conversations that you have going on in the committees. Instead, you're gonna sit here and it's not gonna end at 8:30, it's gonna end way later. And you may not have the types of discussions that you should be having in the committees. So, I like the idea of the three-touch, and then also, if other members want to show up to the committees, that is fine, but you may be attending four committee meetings during that week, so.
Councilmember Lasse.
Something I, I think that, I don't wanna miss out on this either, we wanna, I wanna bring to everybody's attention is also the idea below the three-touch rule, the other bullet point that's off the screen currently, but that inclusion of a one-page executive summary for project and key issues, that's an opportunity to summarize some of the things that we would normally discuss in a longer lengthy amount of time, get to the bullet points, get to the items that are, that are pertinent, while we've also looked at the greater document for things that are important in depth. Beyond that, I go back to the idea that if, if it's okay to have a committee of the whole with seven sitting council members, why is it not okay to have individual committees with four sitting council members? It doesn't, I don't understand the difference. We notice the meetings anyway, we publish the agendas anyway, we publish updated agendas and amended agendas anyway. It would seem that that's could, we could find a way to accommodate that, because I, I mean, I personally applaud council member Shepherd for, for saying, I wanna be more involved. And I think that's important. I think that's something that we all are here because we wanna be more involved. And so, if there's a way to accommodate the committees as they currently exist and, and have a greater participation, then, then I'm all for that. I just don't, I don't know if the, I just, I see challenges with the committee of the whole concept.
Councilmember Holloway and then Councilmember Sunwell.
Okay, so, a couple of issues I have. One, the math doesn't work. If I have four committee meetings now and I'm spending an hour in there, that's four hours a week we're doing in committee, and we're talking of doing it in less than three. Okay? And typically, they'll go a little longer, so we're actually talking six hours, diving it down to three. Math doesn't work. Two, as you see there, what we've driven is where we typically have a flow of two weeks for an agenda bill, this is gonna drive it to four weeks for an agenda bill. A lot of the agenda bills we have, guys, are non-controversial. Four-week flow, I don't think we're doing a service to the city. Three, I think we start to dilute the accountability of the committees and the committee chairs by having this as a committee of the whole. Later on this year, I wanna look to Sean and say, Sean, this is a proposal from Public Works, does that make sense? And he as committee chair should have the background to do that, okay? Four, there's a general meeting rule or law called lines of communication. It's N minus one squared. Means if you have a subject that you need to discuss, the lines of communication to get that covered are based on the number of members in the discussion. You will go from having to discuss it four times to having to discuss it 36 times to get it settled, when you go from three, three council members active to seven council members active. I guess I would like to make a motion that we action the FNA committee to figure out how we can notice the existing committees to allow additional council members to attend as public and to provide input and questions as public. You are getting toward the microphone.
Well, first of all, the, this is a baby, you know, trying to source Rex, I'm gonna swat away, because what you just proposed is a motion, it's not an amendment. It's, it's a fundamental, you know, replacement proposal to what's on the floor, or what's under, I'm sorry, this isn't even a motion on the floor.
This isn't even a motion to start with. So I took it to make it a motion.
Took it to.
Yeah. As Rosanna...
I made a dinosaur.
Off and on the same nevermind. Okay, Bob?
Sure. So, the, I'll try to, I can't remember who said what, so I'm just gonna try to address the various comments that I heard.
I want you to address, you know, why not four?
So, first of all, why is it a problem to have four at a committee meeting? And the answer to that is, we advertise those as committee meetings only, which would have three members. If there are four, now you have a quorum of the full council. But the full council regular meetings only occur on the second and fourth Mondays, and that would be a special meeting of the council that hasn't been advertised. The way I have seen some of the permutations that I've, from the comments, addressed in other cities, is that the committee meetings are advertised as joint, fill-in-the-blank committee and committee of the whole, subject to a council rule that says those joint council of the whole committee members may participate only as ex officio members, in that they can ask questions and offer comments when recognized by the chair, but they may not vote. And that the vote on the various agenda issues of that individual committee are only the three members. So, it's more complicated from a noticing standpoint, but not, not that much. And that if you, if, then the, the quorum, if you will, of four is a quorum potentially of the committee of the whole, but since you've noticed it either as a regular or a special meeting, you don't have an open meetings issue.
And maybe that's something that would be experimented with, with several months or six months, until everybody felt like they would come up to speed on the issues. Councilmember Sunwell.
So, I'm, I'm torn on this a little bit. I definitely see it both ways. I, I would propose, if we went forward with this, that there would still be a, for lack of a better term, a chair, someone who is responsible for the decorum, the rules of the meeting that's going on. It could, it could be the chair that's been assigned today, does, whatever. One of the things I'm, I'm concerned about, I, I, I feel like, so right now, we're on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, right? Our committee meetings are spread because Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Okay. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So, I feel like by going this route, we create a forcing function for everyone to be equally engaged. I think the chances of Peggy showing up every meeting, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, is very high, because she's shown up at them for years, or at least many, many months, right? But I fear, I would be very surprised that the seven of us were showing up at every meeting on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, which tells me that we, we wouldn't be getting the level of involvement and engagement that one could argue is important to have with, across committees. And this is the only, because, because no, I mean, except for Peggy, no one is gonna show up to all of these meetings on a consistent basis. And so that is my concern about not going this route, is we fall back to everyone being in their little specialty, right? And not stepping outside of, of what those specialties are, and therefore being less informed.
If there's no objection, I wanna invite those that have not commented yet, and Peggy, you're one of the only that have it, did you wanna, you wanna weigh in on this?
Yeah, one of the, and I'm just curious about questions and comments. I have asked for information and documents, and it seems like I'm not getting responses, so I'm not getting enough information for me to do this work. And so I'm not confident that, and I'm not even sure it's reasonable to ask the staff for that kind of level of a service, if we've got three people who are, you know, on point to receive information in a particular meeting, then the staff can be organized and they can pull that together. But, say, I want to be able to come to a council meeting, I'm not one of those three people, I'm not getting the same level of background and information that the rest of the committee is getting. And so I, I'm, you know, I wanna know more about what I'm voting on. And so I feel like there's just this big void of information.
Peggy, you're getting the same packet all the other council members are. In fact, you know, that, those kind of comments baffle my staff, because you've been provided more information than almost any other council member I've worked with in the last several years, in fact, or a member of the public. So, I'm, I'm not sure what information you feel you're not getting.
Well, the background as far as, you know, the, when Partite was changing the scope, I don't understand what happened there with the change of scope.
Mayor, just for a point of clarification, each councilor should be receiving a packet for each of the committees, as well as a regular council meeting. That's been our practice now for several years. If that's not happening, I wanna know about that immediately, but I can assure you, the staff's been directed, and that's been going on, as I said, as, as a practice. You should be receiving those regardless of whether or not you want them. We were, they were directed to provide those to all council members for every committee and council, and council meeting.
Is he on it? Can I?
Yeah, go ahead. I mean, there may be, there may be packets that you're not getting, that three committee members are getting that you're not receiving, then again, that's why we think this, at a committee level, Jim, for example, before it comes to the full council, that's why the three-touch rule, I think, would clear some of this up, because then those that aren't, aren't at a particular committee that, I mean, we're queuing up information to council members at a specific committee, but, go ahead.
But we, all council members get full packets of all committees.
They should be, each councilor should be getting each committee's.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, I'm, I just wanna be clear on the facts before council member Shepherd goes on. It is my belief, and am I wrong, it is my belief that I am seeing everything, that every committee, that there is no committee, no council member on any committee that is getting more information than I am, that I'm getting everything they're getting. Is that false?
You should be, yes, that should, that should be correct. You should be getting it delivered through an email.
That is false. He's saying...
Make sure it's double negative.
He asked it in a weird way.
Double negative, sorry.
We are not providing information to one or two or three councilors that not everybody else is receiving. So every one of you is getting the exact same information every week on every committee and council meeting.
Is there ever a timing issue where some council members are getting information slightly before other council members?
No, we deliver those as a...
They all get it at the same time.
Council members are...
Okay. So when it's sent out to a committee members, it goes out to all the council members, even though it's just for that committee? All right. Councilmember Shepherd, continue, please.
So, if you have all the information you need from the agenda packet, why do you have a meeting?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
There's follow-on questions after the agenda packet that happens in those meetings that we don't know what's going on.
There is, there is discussion in committee, yes.
Yeah.
Some of it's historical, whatever, that those committees can dive down into. That is not part of the agenda package, may not be part of the agenda bill, it's background information. Concur.
Right, so that's, that's the void.
Or, I'm sorry, I should have recognized Councilmember Holloway. Councilmember Sunwell had his hand up, and then I'll go to Lasse.
So, is there, what is the end game in this conversation? Is there, is there a vote on how we're gonna proceed? Because we could literally, I, I'm actually done.
Chair, point of order.
I'll defer.
I made, I made a motion. I would like to see if there is a second and action on the motion.
Okay, if you could state, restate the motion, please.
The motion was to action this to FNA, to come up with procedures and guidelines under which we can properly notice and administer the existing committee meetings to allow attendance by all council members, the non-seated council members attending as public.
Second.
You don't want them attending as public. That one's incorrect.
Well, I have a motion to second as stated by Councilmember Holloway. Further discussion, go ahead, Anne, bring, it's on the floor for discussion, so if you have something.
Okay, so it's not on the floor yet. It's been made and seconded, but it has not been stated by the chair. The parliamentarian would like to point out...
Stated by Councilmember Holloway, I was gonna try and repeat it, but...
Well, you'll need to repeat it, if I may, and the parliamentarian would strongly suggest not having those words as public. The proposal from the attorney was that the, the meetings would be noticed and the council members who are not members of the committee would be able to ask questions, but not to vote.
Or perhaps leave out of the language, any solution. In other words, let the committee come up with the solution.
That's why I want FNA to kinda put up...
Right.
The rules of engagement for these new committee meetings.
Right, but don't add, don't add one of the rules in your motion, I guess is what's being suggested, just say, send it back to FNA to figure out a way to allow participation, or at least attendance a committee means by other council members.
Well, if I may, attendance and participation. I mean, so you can rephrase it, because it hasn't yet been stated.
I would like to rephrase my motion. To action this back to FNA for procedures and rules of engagement for full council attendance at committees.
Second.
Okay. Motion to second to, sorry, point of order, Peggy. Please, into the microphone, Peggy.
Point of order. And I don't know if this is proper or not, but I'm just thinking that Tia's trying to write notes, maybe we should have her read back what she's heard. Okay.
We change it like three times.
Well, it kinda changes every time we say it. The words are a little different each time, so...
Grab off tape, tape, the last thing I said.
Thank you, Peggy, but we do often, we do often...
I'll just listen to the tape. That'll help me the most. Okay, thank you.
Peggy, we do often do that, and...
We do that almost every, when it gets like this, we have to listen to it word by word again and get it straight.
Councilmember Holloway, you prepared to restate that again? Or, Tia, go ahead and read what you have. Or, Tia, go ahead and read what you have captured, then Councilmember Holloway can complete the rest.
Okay.
Into the microphone, please.
You motioned to action back to FNA for procedures to full, procedures for full council participation at council committee meetings, I was getting to. Hold on. And then somewhere else, I had the rest of it.
That's it.
That's, that's probably sufficient at this stage. That's sufficient at this stage.
You dropped the rest.
You dropped the rest of it. Is that sufficient?
That's sufficient at this stage. I think we can work some of the issues and nuances underneath that.
Full council participation at council meetings.
Yes.
Starting next week, I'm chair of FNA.
I had a second.
So I did action myself, yes.
I thought you were going to say at the parks. Okay, I have a motion to second.
I spread by.
Tia's going to reread it.
Brian Holloway. For action back to FNA for procedures for full council participation at council committee meetings.
All right. Any further discussion? And I guess my question would be, how does that now not suddenly create five council meetings in two weeks?
It doesn't. Exactly what I said.
No, I think we need the, those rules of engagements of those non-seated council members, what are the rules of engagement for them in the committee? I think there is much.
And that's what you want the committee to, FNA to kind of hammer around or figure out.
That's why I think we ought to have a discussion, and FNA ought to, Bob, help us iron it out.
Unfortunately, you're in that committee.
Yeah.
He's the chair.
I think, I think what we're saying is what's.
Sorry, Councilmember Sunwell, did you, were you adding something?
Yeah, I, so, the ironic twist of that is, is, is three people that determine the rules for larger participation.
No, 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 we'd come back to council for a vote.
Okay.
In the form of a resolution.
So.
And it seems like there's no rush, we can do the existing committees and see how they're working, meanwhile, try and hammer this thing out, maybe it takes a month or two to hammer it out.
Yeah, that's fine, but to, to answer your comment, it doesn't. For a committee, for, for a council member who wants to be engaged and involved at the same level as any other council, as a, as a person of that committee, well, now you need to go to five meetings in two weeks.
Yes. Or you depend on your peers.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to tighten it up. Councilmember Ross say?
Potentially, if you choose to, or potentially not, if FNA reports back and proposes that that's not feasible.
Yeah, those are the issues that.
Yeah, I think we've just, we've just proven what will happen if we have a committee of the whole every first and third Monday, because this is what will happen on every single issue. I don't think this, it's hard to see past that. So, I trust that the committee members on FNA will give it a thorough review, they will provide a report back to council that will say, "This is a feasible idea under these conditions," or "It's unfeasible because of these conditions," and we can address it at the next meeting.
Great. Sounded like a motion in there maybe, but anybody else?
I didn't put a timeframe on that.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Motion to call, call the question.
That's the motion I thought was coming, okay. If there's, if there's no objection, I'll call the question. Any objection? All right. With that, well, that's being kicked to committee now for further discussion.
Oh, wait, got a vote, got a vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, we actually have a motion, that's right.
I have a point to fill.
See, it all works good when I'm held to account here, right? Okay, being, no further discussion. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this, and parrot action? Oh, boy. Sherlene, go ahead.
As I'm listening to it, I'm wondering, how is the citizen, you're expecting your citizens to come to every meeting like that? Because you're, what you're doing now is cutting off.
Sherlene, if you could speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry, what you're doing, from what I see, is that you're, you're cutting out the information that the citizens, because you're not going to be discussing it at the city council meetings. It's going to be discussed in the, in the committee meetings, and yet, so then every citizen, if they want to know, because you're not going to livestream it.
They may or they may not, they haven't decided that.
Yeah, and it does get rid of the council meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have been, we just need to look at the public.
So, we're going to, the citizen is going to get less information unless the citizen goes to every committee meeting also, because we're not going to hear the discussion that goes at the council meetings, because you're going to all discuss it at the committee meetings.
As a full council.
Yeah, as a full council. So, you're going to have committee meetings every week, and your citizens, I mean, I may be there, but if you're not going to livestream it, your citizens, they're asking you to be more transparent, and what you're doing is closing them off more, the way I see it. That's just my opinion, I'm just like wondering, okay, I'm going to have to start coming now to every whole committee meeting to hear the discussion that I normally hear here at the council meeting, plus, I'm going to have to go then on Tuesdays to go to the planning commission, I'm sorry, because I'll be there, you know. You may not want me there, but, so.
We do.
My point is that your citizens, what I, which is what I heard before, and then with the elections, is they want you to be more transparent, and I see you closing them off more. That is just my opinion.
Thank you, Sherlene. Your opinion matters. Anna?
Anna Sotelo, 7713 Center Boulevard Southeast. I was just thinking the exact same thing, so I just am kind of piggybacking on that, that it's a tremendous burden that you'd be asking the citizens, if they wanted to participate, to come to that many meetings a week. The other is that the same thing, it won't be livestreamed, so I think that the transparency really goes right out the door. I think that you, and I especially maybe recommend, maybe at your retreat, that you guys figure out where the time sucks are happening in this meeting. I, myself, an observer, can say that I expect, and I believe your council expects, that when you guys do bring things up, bring some documenting of things for them to make a conscientious decision. For example, the last board meeting, I was very surprised by not having a lot of this information, and a whole hour was wasted, based on council members asking for this information, and by not showing up with this kind of information, it just was an hour of wasted time. I really encourage you guys that you would look at your retreat and figure out where is your wasted time, and what do you need to move a meeting much faster. And I think having supporting, documenting evidence on why you want to pass things is going to be a big start, but I think if you go to what you guys are discussing, it is not going to work. And again, this whole conversation was like much ado about nothing.
Thank you, Anna. Dick Sheehan.
My name's Richard Sheehan, 6701 West Crestview Loop, Southeast. So I just want to mention that actually, the way we've been operating all along has been that the committees do this work, the committees are open to the public and can come, and so, actually, what's being proposed, I don't see as, you know, any change in making it more obscure to the public. This was something I wasn't aware of before, but, you know, there is a lot of work that does go on in the committees, so, which I wouldn't have known if it hadn't been for the fact that my wife started attending many of them, but, so anyway, I just wanted to mention actually more to the public than to the committee, or to the council, because you guys already know it, is that already the committees are doing lots of work, and so if people want to be there, they can be there, if they want to be really observing how the deliberations go, it's already going on that way, and people can.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? All right, so you know, and all step forward, all those in favor, or, I'm sorry, let me restate the motion. Motion is to, action back to the FNA for procedures for full council participation at council meetings.
Committee meetings.
Council committee meetings, yeah. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, we look, look forward to the good work of the chair and the members of the FNA committee then. All right, are there any other items we have not addressed for committee of the whole tonight? Are there any, any announcements? And again, the staff meetings are written the first meeting of the month, however, at this time, are there any other questions for or from the staff? All right. Are there any citizens who wish to comment prior to concluding tonight's meeting?
I just kind of want to go back to what Mr.
This is Anna Sotelo.
Anna Sotelo, 7713 Center Boulevard Southeast. I want to go back to what Mr. Councilmember Mayhew had said about directing it to Parks and Public Works. What I was referring to was the actual downtown buildings. The downtown buildings, not any part of city property, my initial comment.
The private properties.
Right, they're private properties, so they're either tenants, or they're landlords. It's not Parks and Public Works.
You're, you're asking really, are there Christmas tree light standards?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Holloway, if we could just.
I'm asking, are there standards for how, during the year, because these are staying out during the year, as I read in the email, it was going to be allowed during the entire year, as long as they were all the same clear lights? And that's not the case, I'm seeing some have clear, some have LED, LED. Some have clear, some don't have any, some have strands missing, some have combined strands. So, that's my question, I don't believe that is a Parks and Public Works.
Mayor, if I could offer, we can get this sorted out internally.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Great. I guess it's not appropriate to ask, but there was something on the agenda that's not on the agenda now, regarding Saber Snow Quami? No?
Not that I'm aware of.
If, and can I, at this point, bring something up that's not on the agenda?
Yes.
I don't really understand what the citizen comments.
Point of order, 35 second time.
So, and that's why I was waiting for the Saber Snow Quami. I don't understand who they are, and I don't understand our contribution to them, and I'd like to, as a merchant, at another time, I'd like someone to explain that to me, because if it is supposedly benefiting the merchant, I don't see that happening. Thank you.
Mark, thank you, Anna. Mark, the staff member dealing with that, Anna, works with Mark, you could just touch base, not necessarily tonight, but touch base with Mark Hoffman. Yeah, I think, no, I'd love for you to kind of connect with that effort.
It's supposed to be on the agenda, yeah?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm sorry.
On a report, I thought it would.
Okay. Any other members of the public that comment at this time, before concluding? Okay, at this time, we're going to enter an executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, section 1I, little, triple I.